Welcome. Welcome to the Deschutes County Board of Commissioners meeting for 1:00 PM Monday, September 27, 2021. Two of us are in the room and Commissioner Dare is joining remotely. At this time, the first item is Pledge of Allegiance. Please join me.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic through which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Okay, so Commissioner Dare, we don't see a video, but we do see your name up here. I kind of a, I'll assume you're there at this time. Item number one, a public hearing, consideration of a resolution amending the Deschutes County Sheriff's Office 2021-22 fee schedule.
Commissioners, I just joined the meeting, so I don't know if Tom or Nick.
Yep, so we're on number one, public hearing, it's just been opened. So Joe Brundage would be the one maybe, so, or unless you're gonna step in, Dan. So is Joe Brundage out there?
I am gonna step in actually here. We reviewed county code and it turns out that we did not need a public hearing
Okay.
for this, this emergency fee and would go through Tom or Nick LeWack at this point in time. And I tried to get that taken off the agenda last week, so I apologize if that's still on here.
Well, so we can just acknowledge this. This, yeah, so a public hearing was the just-in-case agenda item, but it sounds like we don't need to. So will this still be a resolution? I guess I'm looking at Dave now.
Yes.
But it'll be signed by county administrator?
It can be, yes.
Okay, so there's, this is following a legislative fee changes, three items on the fee schedule, and yeah, just implement as passed by the Oregon Legislature for bill number 554.
Yeah, those actually went into effect a couple days ago, so this is lagging behind just a few days, but it deals with concealed handgun licenses.
Okay, but yeah, so these are just state-defined fees?
Right. It's just a $40 fee increase, I think, for a new concealed fee, and then there's a Saturday class, and then I think there was a renewal fee that went up 15 or 20 dollars. They were pretty minor fees. But like I said, we realized that they could be done without a public hearing and tried to strike that off through an emergency fee.
Got a problem. So well, so let's acknowledge, so permit fee, $50 additional. So the new fee is 11515, is that the?
I don't know the dollar now, but it did go up, I believe, $50.
Yep, that's fine.
That's correct.
Can I ask, like, I'm just curious where the, where the fee revenue will go and what it's going to be used for, the additional fee revenue?
I apologize. I told Joe Brundage that he did not need to be on this meeting since I did not think it was going to be a public hearing on the agenda. I'm not sure how much revenue that is or what those additional fees will go to, but I can follow up with Joe and have him communicate with you commissioners.
That'd be great. Thank you.
Sure thing.
All set?
Yeah.
So yeah, no action on item number one.
Dave, do you want to have him just approve the resolution and just be done with it?
You know, I'm not sure, was there one put forward? Have you had?
There is a resolution numbered 068.
You can, you can take action on that.
Okay, yeah, so then the.
But we would move county administrator's signature, is that?
Put together as a resolution. I don't know, does it have Thompson? It should be a board signature.
Yeah, so if they, there's a resolution that's included in the packet that has the three commissioners' signature. If they just approve that, I think that will enact the change.
Okay, so, so the agenda, which is not required a public hearing, we have had a discussion, and at this time, there is a resolution number 2021-068, which is part of the packet, which is for board signature.
I move approval of resolution 2021-68, 068, amending the Deschutes County Sheriff's Office 2021-22 fee schedule.
And I'll second the motion. It's Commissioner Dare.
Oh, right, technology's working today. Is there any other discussion? Seeing none, Commissioner Chang?
Yes.
Commissioner Dare?
Yes.
And chair votes yes. Okay.
Commissioners, I just, I did a quick query on this bill in the legislature. It appears that revenue would be used for studies on effectiveness of gun-free zones, among potentially other things.
So then it sounds like it'll be a fee received at the sheriff's office, but maybe going to a pool at the state level?
Routed to the state and then used to study how to manage gun violence. Interesting. Okay. Thanks.
Okay, item number two, a board order establishing overnight parking prohibition on Spring River Road.
All right. Good afternoon, Board. For the record, Chris Dode, Road Department Director. Before you is board order 2021-042, which seeks to prohibit overnight parking on the improved parking areas on Spring River Road east of Harper Bridge and Sun River. As you're aware, we improved parking spaces in that location back in 2019 to support safe access to the Deschutes River, given the conflicts with adjacent traffic on Spring River Road. Now, without a board order or county code provision to specifically prohibit overnight parking, and you can read that as camping, that type of activity would be, is essentially lawful and is subject to occur, and it has, and that's part of the reason why we're bringing this to you today, is there has been some camping that has taken place in that area as not intended. So board order 2021-042 would provide law enforcement with a legal mechanism to go ahead and enforce that prohibition and then cite violators and potentially provide them with the essential tow authority to ensure that camping does not take place in that area. Any questions?
Yeah, no questions by me.
So without this board order, it is legal for people to camp there right now?
Correct. There was, there was no provision that law enforcement could find that would allow them to, to cite and remove a vehicle in which someone was actively camping. There are provisions that they can utilize to tow abandoned vehicles, you know, without this, but in terms of an occupied vehicle, we were told that this order would provide them with more of that clear distinction and the ability to cite and address the problem.
Well, I'm, I'm, I'm in support of moving forward with this. I'm just curious whether there are other, you know, comparably designated roads where we might run into the same issue, in attractive areas? And, and if so, do we need to, do we need to think about something more sweeping than this, you know, long-term?
Potentially. Since I've been here, we've, we've had this crop up twice. First was in areas where, you know, it's kind of in a neighborhood in Tumalo, where people were, were parking, and it lent itself to a no parking, to basically a full parking prohibition was the outcome there. In this case, we built spaces specifically for parking and camping was taking place. So, you know, we've been dealing with it in a very specific manner, and, and, you know, I would think that, you know, I guess, just, just to describe that as a very isolated problem that we've observed.
A lot of the rural roads, especially in southern Deschutes County, it's a very soft slope shoulder, so, I mean, even getting a trailer or an RV off of the edge of the road means you're in trouble. Having this improvement there with the extra wide lanes and the nice big green travel lane ended up being attractive for, you know, for parking a vehicle, a recreational vehicle. So I do see this as a pretty unique situation.
So, any other questions or?
Any questions, Commissioner Dare?
Just gonna take your second to respond. It's been a drought for some reason, so I'm bringing it back over.
Okay. Welcome back, Commissioner Dare. If you're just joining us again, it sounds like you're bounced out and coming back in.
Commissioner, you're muted.
I saw that. Yes.
There we go.
The next, yes, I know, it isn't amazing. It's what, my third Zoom this morning, today, so I don't know why it was a problem, but anyway, no, Chris, thank you so much for doing this. I know we had someone parked there, what is it, about a month ago now, and the community was really, really up in arms, and I'm happy to see this today, so thank you. The board order, I, I will make the motion to approve of board order number 2021-042, which prohibits overnight parking on the improved parking spaces east of Harper Bridge.
I'll second.
Great. Any other discussion? Seeing none, Commissioner Dare?
Ah, yes.
Commissioner Chang?
Yes.
And chair votes yes, too. Well, thank you very much, a little bit of clarity on that situation.
While we're, while we're talking about Harper Bridge, can I just double-check the, the no jumping off Harper Bridge ordinance? When, when does that take effect?
It took effect the day after Labor Day.
Okay. It's a little too cold to think about jumping off Harper Bridge right now, but, so that'll be in place next summer. Thank you.
All right, item number three, applications for federal lands access program.
Good afternoon, everyone. For the record, Cody Smith, county engineer, Deschutes County Road Department. I'm gonna, as I'm sharing my screen here, just give you a quick outline of what we're gonna talk about here this afternoon. I'm going to give a quick overview of the federal lands access program, what it is, and then going to be sharing with you two proposals that the Road Department has prepared in response to a recent call for projects for the federal lands access program. And then I'm going to throw it back to Chris, who's going to talk to you about the next agenda item, which is in regards to some proposals for the federal lands access program that ODOT intends to submit. Can everyone see my screen?
Yes.
Okay, so an overview of the federal lands access program, or FLAP. FLAP provides federal funding for county, state, city, or tribal transportation facilities that are located on, are adjacent to, or provide access to federal lands. The Oregon federal lands access program is currently estimated to receive approximately $35.7 million annually. The program requires a minimum funding match of 10.27% by the applicant. The calls for projects are typically issued every two years for the program. This current call for projects, it was a little bit late, we were expecting to see this last year, and it didn't come out till, till this summer. And the current call for projects is for projects to be delivered in federal fiscal years 2024 and 2025. The proposals for the FLAP program are jointly endorsed by the applicants and then also by the appropriate federal land management agency or agencies. The projects are typically delivered by Western Federal Lands Highway Division, which is a division of the Federal Highway Administration. As such, just wanted to note here that the cost estimates that you'll see with our proposals are for delivery of these projects by Western Federal Lands Highway Division. They are not the, the costs we'd anticipate for the county to deliver these projects, which would be lower. So the Road Department has prepared two proposals in response to the current call for project. Those are proposals for the Buckhorn Road, Oregon 126 to mile post 1.6 project, and the Three Creeks Road, Sister City Limits to Forest Service Boundary projects. So just give a brief overview of those two projects, beginning with the Buckhorn Road, Oregon 126 to mile post 1.6 project.
Got a question?
Sorry, sorry to interrupt you, Cody. So Western Farrell Lands Highway Division delivery of projects, so who are they, I mean, I don't think the Farrell government has a bunch of capacity to do work like that. Who are they using to do these, these projects?
Western Federal Lands Highway Division is, is a division of the Federal Highway Administration. Their, their, their sole purpose in life is to deliver both federal lands access program projects and federal lands transportation program projects, which are federal funds that are spent for similar projects only on federally owned and operated roads. So their office, which is up in Vancouver, that's, that's, that's their sole mission in life is to deliver these projects. So they, they have engineering and project delivery staff to deliver these projects.
So they, they actually mobilize a whole bunch of equipment and come to Deschutes County to build the project?
No, no, as far as the actual construction, they would administer a construction contract for, for a private construction contractor to build the project. But as far as designing the project and the administration of the construction contract, Western Federal Lands does that work.
And, and so the higher costs, would that be because of prevailing wage or something like that, or?
The higher costs have to do with this being federally funded program, so all the federal strings that are attached to it, the guideline, the rules pertaining to NEPA that have to be, and all the environmental clearances that would have to be obtained, just by nature of it being federal funding.
Got it. Okay, thank you.
The distinction I was making is the estimate, the, the cost estimate you're gonna see here are for these projects to be delivered as federal projects, not for these projects to be delivered as your typical road department CIP project.
Got it. Thank you.
So again, our first, our first proposal is for the Buckhorn Road, Oregon 126 to mile post 1.6 project. Buckhorn Road connects Oregon 126 to Lower Bridgeway, out a little ways in between Redmond and Sisters. Buckhorn Road is a collector road, and it's presently a gravel road. The current traffic on Buckhorn Road is approximately 318 vehicles per day, and we, we estimate that approximately 72% of that traffic is generated due to federal lands access. Traffic that's, that's actually generated by the, by the federal lands and whatever amenities they have. Some of the specific destinations that Buckhorn Road accesses in terms of federal land use are the Kleinbutz OHV area, the Buckhorn staging area, Bordenbeck Wildlife Preserve, Crooked River National Grassland, the Deschutes River, and various trailheads that are, that are located north of Oregon 126 and even Lower Bridgeway. In this case, the federal land management agency is the Bureau of Land Management, Primeville District. So the proposed project would include improving the 1.6-mile segment of Buckhorn Road that's adjacent to the BLM lands. Once again, improving it from a gravel road, which it currently is, to a 30-foot-wide paved road. 30-foot width would accommodate 11-foot travel lanes and four-foot shoulder bikeways. With that, there'd also be improved right-of-way fencing and improvement to the OHV trail crossings that exist on the road with the BLM trail, trail network that exists there in the Kleinbutz area. This would be, this project would be phase one of a, of a two-phase project that the Road Department currently has in our CIP. The last FLAP cycle, we actually submitted a project, a proposal for this project for improving the entire length of Buckhorn Road. That, that proposal was not successful in the, in the program the last go-around. So we've, what we've decided to do with this go-around is trim our project down to just include the segment of road that, that is adjacent to the BLM lands, with the intent of possibly delivering the, the second phase of the project just ourselves with, with county funds. So the estimated project cost for this proposal is $2.1 million. Roughly, what we're asking for from the FLAP program is $1,484,000, which is about 70, which is 70% of the total project estimate. That would leave a proposed county match for the project of $636,000 and some change, which would be 30% of the total project estimate. Any, any questions on this project?
Cody, so 1.6 miles, is that half of, half of Buckhorn Road to, to Lower Bridge Road, or is it a third, or how much is left?
It's a little less than half. The exact mileage, I forget off the top of my head. I'm gonna, I'm gonna guess it's approximately two and a half to three miles remaining that's north of that. And, and again, that, that remaining segment is, is the segment that's not adjacent to the federal lands. It includes getting down, down the hill over the rim there, if you're familiar with Buckhorn Road at all. That, that's gonna require some, some more substantial improvements. But again, we, because of the success or lack thereof that our, that our application for this project as a whole project had the last go-around, we thought that trimming this down into a, a FLAP project that just addressed the segment of road adjacent to the federal lands would, would, our intent is that that would be more successful with the program.
Thanks.
Okay, and then our second project proposal is Three Creeks Road, Sister City Limits to Forest Service Boundary. So Three Creeks Road is a collector road that connects to, connects the city of Sisters up to various destinations in the Deschutes National Forest. The road's presently a 24-foot-wide paved road. Current PCI for that's about 76. It's, it's in fair condition right now. There, there are some localized areas out there that have some pretty high degree of severity in them. Average daily traffic on Three Creeks Road is 868 vehicles per day. We, we've determined that approximately 93% of that traffic is all federal lands generated. There's also an existing bridge on, on the county segment of Three Creeks Road that crosses Three Sisters Irrigation District Canal that has been piped, and there's no longer need for that bridge there. Three Creeks Road, as I said before, provides access to a lot of destinations. Among them is Three Creeks Lake, Three Creeks Snow Park, the Three Sisters Wilderness, the Peterson Ridge Trailhead, Tam McArthur Rim Trailhead, the upper reaches of Waichus Creek, and various other destinations. And the Federal Land Management Agency, in this case, is the Deschutes National Forest. So the proposed project scope would include paving and widening the county's 3.7-mile segment of Three Creeks Road, adjacent to the Forest Service lands, to a 30-foot-wide paved roadway. So once again, 11-foot travel lanes, four-foot shoulder bikeways. We have a fairly high number of, we see a lot of bike traffic out on this road. We don't have exact counts for the bike traffic that we're seeing out there. Our, our department, we just recently got our hands on a, on a vehicle counter that'll allow us to count bicycle traffic, but we haven't had a chance to use it out on Three Creeks Road yet. But just, just from our observations, generally, anytime we're out there, we often see more bikes than we do actual cars driving on the road. bikes than we do actual cars driving on the road. So, with the project, we'd also be improving the lane and roadside delineation, and then removing that existing canal bridge that's now an obsolete structure on our road and can be removed. So, the estimated cost for this project is $2,897,000. We are, our proposed ask from the FLAP program is $2,599,000 and some change. That's 89.73% of the total estimate. And the proposed county match for this project would be the minimum match requirement, which Any questions on this project?
So, the, I'm just, an observation, the county match on this one at the minimum is truly kind of the concept that there's no county connectivity. It's from a city out to the forest, where Buckhorn is a mixed-use facility. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Two great projects.
So, just in conclusion here for my piece, proposals for the, under the current call for project are due Thursday, October 7. Road Department, we've already obtained signatures from the Deschutes National Forest for the joint endorsement form for our proposal for the Three Creeks Road project. We're currently awaiting signature from the BLM Primeville District for the joint endorsement form for the Buckhorn Road project, but we will have those here, anticipate within the week. So, at this time, the Road Department is requesting Board of County Commissioners support and Board of County Commissioners Chair's signature of the proposal joint endorsement forms for both projects.
Okay. Is there any other discussion or questions about this?
The one other thing I would say is that I'm really excited about that Buckhorn Road project, because I still have a long-term interest in exploring the county developing a campground down there by Lower Bridge on county property, and this would make it that much, paving Buckhorn Road would make it that much easier for people to get to that site from other directions, so.
Great.
Yeah. The, one other thing that I'd ask about is that Senator Merkley's field rep, their local staffer, asked us if we would like to have, if we'd like to ask for a letter of support. And I think that getting a letter of support from one of the members of our congressional delegation could be helpful, and I don't, if we're going to ask for one, we might as well ask for all three. And I can only imagine that getting letters of support from all three of our members of Congress that represent this area could be useful in the competition. But Cody or Chris, if you have a better sense of kind of how the competition process for this works, and have any advice for us on whether that's useful or not, I'd love to hear it.
I mean, I think in general, certainly any letters of support we can get from other agencies or certainly from our elected officials is helpful. Chris, jump back on here, so I'll let him maybe speak more to the selection process.
Yeah, absolutely. The more, you know, support we can show for a project, the better. Probably what greases the skids the most for FLAP projects are working with those federal land management agencies. There's a technical advisory group that meets and ranks all the projects, and so these are the subject matter experts with Forest Service, BLM, so on and so forth. And so, to the extent that our project and, you know, we get support from their bosses, essentially, you know, I think that would go a long way. But, you know, our work after this, we'll be working with our local reps to make sure they're advocating for these projects amongst all the other projects that they'll be looking at when they sit down and review these over the coming months.
Sounds good. So, should I ask for a letter?
Oh, so I've initiated that, a little bit of that conversation, sorry, with the Merkley's office. They reached out, as you're aware, and I can go ahead and initiate the other three and include you all as necessary to kind of help that flow a little bit better in the limited time that we have left. So, thank you for that.
He'll do it.
Great. Thanks, Chris. Yeah, I think that, I think these brief write-ups in the staff report would be perfect for explaining the projects to those congressional staffers and getting the process started.
You bet. And I believe we can continue to get letters of support even after the October 7 deadline. So, that's something that we don't, we probably shouldn't feel we need to rush them on, but it'd be great to have it beforehand if possible.
So, Cody, when will the determinations be made then? Because these, you know, I love both of the projects, and it would surely be nice if we would be awarded. Is it by the end of the year?
That wouldn't be by the end of this calendar year. I think it's going to be early spring next year, when their selection committee is going to convene. The selection committee consists of representatives, there's a county representative, Brian Worley from the Association of Oregon Counties, there's an ODOT representative, who's actually Gary Farnsworth, our local region manager, and then there's representatives from different land management agencies, the BLM, Forest Service, National Park Service, a few others, who are all together on the selection committee. So, they, I think in the spring, they're actually going to do their road trip to actually visit the project sites, or at least some of the select proposed project sites. And I wouldn't, I don't know if we have a set date as far as when they're going to make their actual project decisions, but I would anticipate we're probably not going to hear about it until next summer at the soonest.
Thank you.
I'll move approval of Chair's signature and Road Department's submission of FLAP applications for the Buckhorn Road, Oregon 126 to mile post 1.6, and Three Creeks Road, Sister City Limits to Forest Service Boundary projects.
And I'll second the motion.
Is there any other discussion? Seeing none, Commissioner Chang?
Yes.
Commissioner Adair?
Yes.
And Chair votes yes. Okay, there's two projects. Let's hear about some more. The next agenda item is ODOT FLAP projects.
Thank you, Board, again for the record. Chris Dode, Road Department Director. So, Cody just walked you through the two best projects in the FLAP program. Should be easy slam dunks, right? Now, we're going to hear about a couple more that ODOT is submitting within Deschutes County. And there's other projects also being submitted by other agencies as well, and I can kind of briefly mention those here at the end. But in your packet, Board, you have two projects that ODOT has put some effort into preparing applications for. Now, the first one is the Bend-Lava Trailhead Improvement Project. This consists of a parking lot, trailhead, and then an undercrossing of Knott Road for the project that was previously awarded FLAP funds, consisting of the trail from basically Knott Road through High Desert Museum area, and then eventually serving the Lava Lands area as its federal land connection point. So, this project would be a $3.5 million project. ODOT is proposing a 10.27%, so the minimum match associated with that. The second project is US 97 Century Drive to the US Forest Service Boundary. This would extend the multi-lane section of US 97 that's currently under construction and terminating just south of Vandevere Road. This would extend this several miles, 3 miles further to the south to the Forest Service Boundary and kind of complete that project in all of its phases. It includes two wildlife undercrossings in addition to the multi-lane road section. Now, this is a $15 million project and a 10.27% match. And it's very customary for ODOT to, again, try to gain support from community leaders, and so that's what they've asked us, asked the Board to do, is sign a letter of support that they can attach to their application for these two projects. As Cody mentioned, this is a $70 million statewide pool. That's 2 years at $35 million each, so it's a pretty big pool of funding. ODOT's asking for a big chunk of it right here with these two projects. And so, we are, we will be competing with them, but competing in a way that hopefully allows for all the projects to be considered and funded, hopefully. Several other projects that we've heard about, just kind of through the grapevine here recently, CET, Cascade Lakes Transit, they were previously awarded FLAP funds to provide transit service into the Cascade Lakes Trailhead areas and up Century Drive. And I don't know that that particular FLAP project has been implemented yet. I think that's coming online here in the next year or so. However, this is another FLAP opportunity for them to extend that funding that was previously provided. They'll be submitting an application. They're not asking for anything from us. That's just another project that I'm aware of. And also, ODOT is kind of at the 11th hour-ish, putting together another application for portions of the Deschutes County Intelligent Transportation System Plan that involve variable message signage that would be installed in Bend on Century Drive and then up at the mountain to provide traveler information, especially, you know, those folks heading up for, in winter conditions, to Mount Bachelor. It's helpful to have information down low before you get high. And as a part of that project as well, a similar piece of infrastructure would be installed on Spring River Road, just out of Sun River, our road, and then also up at River Summit, near the intersection with Century. They'll provide that same traveler information. Again, it's very useful to convey at the, down low before folks get all the way to Mount Bachelor and beyond and find that conditions are such that they're not great for travel. So, those are other projects that are in the mix. But what we're asking for, what ODOT's asking for here today, Board, is just a signature on the letter that's attached in your packet endorsing their two primary projects.
Chris, I thought I was hearing about another project along Century Drive, you know, down close into Bend as well. Is that, I thought I heard about that at the MPO or somewhere. Does that sound familiar?
Yeah, I believe there's a project that perhaps even the city is coupling to, maybe Bend Parks, provide trail connectivity. Actually, I just heard rumblings of that myself, so I don't know the exact details. And it might even be attached to this other project that, with variable message signs. I'm not sure. We didn't get that information in time to review it and submit it with this packet. But FLAP's become a very popular program because it's very well-funded for Oregon. The rules are such that, you know, you used to have a, have to be a specific type of facility to get this funding, federal forest highway, but now it's really anything that could provide access to federal lands. And so, it is reaching down into cities and organizations that normally wouldn't be an applicant, find themselves potentially being an applicant. And again, because it's robustly funded, it's attracting a lot of unique applications.
Do you have a, my impression is that our region is very successful with this program. And so, could you confirm that? And then, kind of to give us, I mean, $35.7 million annually is a lot of money, but is, I mean, it seems like we're getting close to asking for all of it just from within Deschutes County with the projects that we were just talking about. I mean, do you have a sense of how many projects could potentially be successful?
You know, typically, I believe statewide, it's 18 to 20 projects, but probably at a fraction of that funding. And so, I would expect, I wouldn't be surprised if, you know, upwards of 30-plus projects are, you know, considered for the funding that's available in this go-around. $70 million is, I'm guessing, a record for FLAP. We've been successful as an agency. Skylander's Road was constructed, you know, almost entirely with FLAP funds, over $8 million there annually. You know, we're, I don't, I can't remember FLAP cycle where we haven't been successful. Within the past several, we've done a lot of chip seal work. George Milliken Road, Palanale Lake Road, South Century, Cascade Lakes Highway, and various segments have all been FLAP projects for chip seal. We did a bike study for Cascade Lakes Highway with FLAP funds, and ODOT has been very successful with some of their work here locally. The trail that we talked about has been approved twice for funding or study, and then also for construction. A portion of the Vandevere work that's under construction now, associated with that multi-lane highway project, is FLAP funds, and there've been other projects I think ODOT has been successful in as well. So, we have 80% federal lands in this county, and I think, you know, we make good projects, good candidate projects for this program.
All right. Thanks. Okay, so we're, are we supportive of writing a letter of support for ODOT for these FLAP projects?
Commissioners, can I ask, I'm just curious if ODOT submitted a letter of support for our project?
Chris or Cody, do we have a letter of support from ODOT for our projects?
Our support from ODOT will come when we do some serious arm-twisting. Cody mentioned Gary Farnsworth is a part of that project development committee. He's one of the top three selectors in that process. I don't think as a state agency, ODOT submits, endorses projects per se, but they certainly, you know, can be, our partnership certainly can be leveraged with them when those projects are selected and will be.
Okay. Well...
What I was going to say is an endorsement from the Board of Commissioners goes a long ways. An endorsement from ODOT doesn't really mean anything.
Well, so, these are for the people in our community. These are, you know, Deschutes County, traveled roads anyway, so I'm supportive of getting the word out and acknowledging these projects.
They're great road projects and road and trail projects regardless. Do we need a motion or just yes or?
So, this is a letter of support for Chair's signature. It's attached to the last page.
How about, I move approval of Board Chair's signature on the letter of support on behalf of ODOT's two FLAP projects.
And I second the motion.
Okay. So, one other question, and I just can't help it, but was the South Century, US Forest Service Boundary project, the 97 dual-lane project, was that always planned as a two-phase project, or it just ended up having to be that way because of the dynamic world we live in? And that's more of a question for ODOT, but do you know that, Chris or Cody?
I believe it, you know, they were hopeful for a build grant at one point that would have assured a one-phase project, but had to break it in half when they were unsuccessful, I believe, in that effort. So, they've been building what they've been able to build through resources that they've been able to acquire, and now they're going this route for the last bit of it.
Okay. So, they always knew the full distance of the project. It's always been a function of funding.
Correct. Yeah, it's always intended to go to the Forest Service Boundary, and they've just had to phase it based on available funds.
Okay, thank you. Any other discussions? Seeing none, Commissioner Chang?
Yes.
Commissioner Adair?
Yes.
And I'll vote yes also. Thank you.
Just one other point on that before Chris and Cody leave also. Chris mentioned that CET, Mayor may not be submitting an application for the bus service to the trailheads out of Cascade Lakes Highway. Whitney Hale was contacted this week by COIC, asking if the Commissioners might consider a letter of support for, it's not clear to me... a le- letter of support for, and it's not clear to me whether it's that project or maybe the shuttle to Mount Bachelor, but if you would, are willing to consider that, we could bring it back on Wednesday, but I know Whitney's on the line and she can probably fill in what I missed with that if you have a minute.
So just learn about the specific project, I guess, is the first step.
Yeah. Whitney, do you want to give us a little bit more specifics right now?
Yeah, it sounds like this application is to support Route Eighteen, which is the route that CET runs up to Mount Bachelor and the surrounding areas in the winter. And so the letter of support that they've prepared for partners speaks to the fact that they're the only public transit agency that can connect folks up to that, that area and asks for continuing FLAP support to be able to run that route. So I'm happy to share this with the Board, but that's it in a nutshell.
I think we've seen that as a successful transportation option up to Mount Bachelor. COVID's really probably changed the dynamics of that just because of public transportation. But, yeah, I mean, in the future, hopefully it can be very successful again too.
Yeah, yeah. I mean, I, I hope by this summer, by this winter that, well, actually, I, these proposals are for, they won't be decided until next summer and, well, definitely by winter twenty-two, twenty-three, hopefully people will be able to ride the bus to Bachelor in the winter without having to worry about infectious disease in the, in the, in the bus air. And.
Good old fashioned cold.
Yeah, and, and the Cascade Lakes Highway is, is horrible during the winter. So anything to get a few more cars off the road and consolidate a little bit, sounds great to me.
So for a project like that, we support just having it come up on Wednesday or at the end of the day today. I mean, are you ready, Whitney? Is there a letter prepared or?
There's a letter prepared on letterhead for your review, so if you'd like, I could bring that down later today, Sheriff.
Yep, yeah, let's do that, yeah. So I do have a two o'clock call today. It's a county chairs with the governor call. That's what, that's how our agenda is working here. So there's a recess at two o'clock. So, yeah, let's do that after that recess. Okay, so next item, how to apply funds received in repayment of small business assistance loans. So Greg Munn is going to join us. Well, I'll be, yeah, stepping out for Zoom call.
Okay, good afternoon, Commissioners. Greg Munn, County Treasurer and Chief Financial Officer. On the line with me from COIC is Pat Girmick, and he might have something to say here as we go through this next agenda item. So the purpose of this next agenda item is to consider how to apply funds received in repayment for small business assistance loans. And just in terms of background, the Board met back in February to consider how to address early repayment of some business assistance funds that we received that were made with CARES Act dollars through COIC. The document I just gave you is referenced in this staff report, but it wasn't attached like it said it was attached, so I'm handing it to you physically. So that was the original staff report back from February. So at that time, the Board decided to leave the funds with COIC for the time being and revisit the question at a later time when it was known whether additional state or federal funds would be received for the purpose of business assistance. The Board also asked for recommendation from COIC. At the time of this staff report, there's been no additional state or federal funding received by the county or approved by the Board for the purpose of making business assistance loans. A recommendation from COIC is included as an attachment to the staff report. And just in terms of background, as was discussed at the February second, twenty-one Board Meeting, there are three options to consider. One was to grant the funds to COIC to manage as an ongoing revolving loan fund to support the economic development in the county. And would formally grant those CARES Act funds to COIC to do such. This is, this is staff's recommendation. The second option is to return those funds to the county to be repurposed at Board discretion. This would require the county to set up and manage an ongoing revolving loan fund or grant funds per the requirements of the CARES Act. And the third option would be to forgive the loans and convert those agreements to grants. So you also have a recommendation from, a letter from COIC with their recommendation. Staff's recommendation is to approve granting these previously contributed CARES Act funds plus any accrued interest to COIC for the establishment of a sustainable and revolving small business assistance loan program in the county. So there's the letter there and Pat is on the line if you have any questions.
Great. So a couple of choices in front of us here with the recommendation for option number one. So one question I would have, and Patrick may be able to help, is, is there a repayment schedule that's implemented at this time for the, the existing loans?
Yes, they are. The, the loans were set up for a five-year program payback and all the borrowers are current and they were very happy to get their loans and things are going pretty smoothly at this point.
Yeah, so it's, nothing's really in panic mode for either party at this point in time. It's kind of what I was trying to understand. That's great.
So that, 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 that five-year term, are they required to make any interim payments or just that, you know, at the end of five years, pay back this amount?
Thank you. The, the program started off with the, they deferred their, their payments for six months and then we started interest-only payments for the additional six months. And then basically in June this year, they went on an amortization schedule. Most of the loans are about ten thousand dollars. After year number four, there is a, a balloon for whatever's left. Total term of five years.
Yeah, great.
Okay.
Patrick, we only had one business that actually paid it all in full, correct?
Ah, yes, yes, we did. And they were very happy and as, if I can remember, they also received some grant funds at the time too. She was just ecstatic how everything was kind of happening, so that was very good.
Good. So I think I don't, you know, doing what the staff recommends is important, but I clearly would like it to somehow be labeled Deschutes, Deschutes County Loan Fund on the COIC books, if that's possible, some kind of wording so that they know where these funds originated from.
Okay, and this is in, directly as we have correspondence with the borrowers, basically. Yes, yeah, not easy to do. Thank you.
Okay, that's, you know, I mean, it's, it's, you know, it's seventy-three thousand dollars and it's great to know that everyone is timely with their payments. I know we really, we wanted to help as many people as we could. You know, things were, every day was a new, a new change and really hard for businesses to know what to do when things keep changing. So, but I would make the motion unless, I don't know, maybe it's too early, but I would make the motion to grant the funds to COIC to manage as an ongoing Deschutes County revolving loan fund to support economic development in Deschutes County.
I'll second.
Okay, Adam, very good. So there's been a motion and a second. I'm supportive of this also. COIC does have a, a long history of managing some loan funds, so it's a good place to be able to do that. And I like your idea, Commissioner Dare, just acknowledging this, your Deschutes County efforts. So any other discussions?
Nope.
Seeing then, Commissioner Dare?
Yes.
Commissioner Chang?
Yes.
And Chair votes yes. Thank you. At this time, we'll take a recess until two-thirty and as I say, there'll be an update possibly from the discussions I'm going to be involved in in a moment.
Okay.
Okay, welcome back. This is our Board of Commissioners meeting after recess on the 27th of September. So, we can go to other items kind of at the end of this for, well, do you want to hear about what we just talked about with the Governor's Office? Basically, it's just committing, it's time for vaccines. You know, there was 36 county chairs or judges on the call. Couple just statements about the hospital capacity, the healthcare workers coming from out of the state. The National Guard helping real well right now, making sure the hospital capacity is there. Frustration that other items aren't being dealt with because of COVID patients. The Governor mentioned just keep the push on for vaccines. I'm just saying that's, that was the message of the day just now with the joint meeting with the Governor. There's, you know, some differences of opinion, different county leadership, but it boils down to that, keeping the push on for vaccines. Yeah, so I think that's all the notes I'd have from that meeting just now. Okay, so at this time, item number six, Treasury and Finance Report.
Great, thank you Commissioners. Greg Munn, County Treasurer and Chief Financial Officer. So, this staff report is the monthly Treasury and Finance Report for August 2021. These are actuals through the end of August, August 31st, 2021. So, this should be a fairly brief report because of the newness of the fiscal year. We're two years in, so I'll just hit the high points along the way here. So, the first page is a summary of our Treasury portfolio, and right now, at the end of August, we have a balance in the portfolio of almost $235 million. This is slightly down from last month, about $2 million down, and that's, all things being the same, we would normally expect that just for monthly operating costs of the county. So, but it's, year-to-date, we're up $43 million, and that has to do with a combination of growth and ARPA funds that we received in May, that $19 million. On the investment income side, we, in earnings for the month, net earnings, $131,000. This is $14,000 less than last month, and $227,000, substantial number, less than the same month last year, August of 2020. Year-to-date, with only two months in, we've, the portfolio's earned $275,000, but that's $463,000 less than year-to-date last year. Pretty significant difference. All of our investments are within the category maximums. I would note that at the end of August each year, the local government investment pool, which is managed by the State Treasury, increases the maximum amount allowable in that pool, and so that was just increased to $52,713,000 at the end of August. Yields, yield percentages, there was no change in our pool rate. It stayed at 50.55%, 55 basis points. Overall, the average return on the portfolio declined from 71 basis points to 69 basis points. In terms of benchmarks, you'll notice that the 24-month Treasury benchmark there is 20 basis points. Last month, it was 19 basis points, so slightly up. The 36-month Treasury's at 40 basis points. Last month, it was at 35 basis points. Flipping the page, the graphics there, I don't have a lot to say there, other than the, we're following just normal trends from the past. I think I've mentioned this before, but on that middle graph, you'll notice portfolio balance over time, it mirrors each year. We have an increase in the November timeframe, and then we utilize those funds down for county operations, and then there's another increase in November. If you find May 2021, it's the fourth item from the right on that one three-year portfolio balance graph, and track that up, you'll notice a spike up, which you don't see in the other two years. That's the receipt of the ARPA funds. Any questions on Treasury side? We did have our Investment Advisory Committee meeting today, I would note that. Commissioner Chang was on board, and Nick Leelak was on board as well, so that was successful. So, the results of that will come back to the full Board after the first year. So, on the next page, just a couple of updates in finance. Some of this has been communicated, but I thought I'd just put it all down in the fiscal report to put it all in one spot. So, underneath the American Rescue Plan Act, when we say ARPA, we sometimes generalize that to our $38 million. In theory, the correct term is it's under the state and local fiscal recovery funds. It's just the SLFRF doesn't roll off the tongue quite as well as ARPA, so we have a tendency just to use ARPA. And there's a reason I'm telling you that, and I'll get to that in a second. So, just a couple of updates. The next, the next update for ARPA is this Wednesday, and at the Wednesday meeting, we'll ask the Board for formal approval of the $82,000 expenditure for the mobile morgue that was verbally approved a couple of weeks ago. And also, we will provide an update on the Small Business Assistance Project, and we've teamed up with not only the Chambers, but with COIC, and we'll have a proposal for the Board to move forward with, a proposal to eventually grant those funds out to those small businesses and nonprofits in the community that have been, still have a financial net negative impact from COVID. Then on October 13th, we'll have the Child Care Expansion Committee meet with the Board, and the goal there is to come up with identification of some short-term actions that could increase slots immediately, and longer-term activities to ramp up slot numbers over time. The proposal for the Board's consideration on the 13th for that. And then, we'll also be involved on the 13th with the Joint City of Sisters Board Meeting. So, the reason why I mentioned at the beginning, the state-local fiscal recovery funds, is because another component of ARPA is local assistance funds, and we haven't talked about that a lot, but it's $1.5 billion that's being allocated out to natural resource counties. And we have an early estimate on what we think that might be in fiscal '22 and '23, and we're estimating that to be a little over $4 million for each of those two years. So, somewhere between four and four-and-a-half million dollars, or eight and eight-and-a-half million dollars total over that two-year period. Just an early heads-up on that, and there'll be more information to follow. And then, the last piece here was just the biomass project, and as you recall, they were here and made a presentation to the Board. And since then, we've met with them, and they are working with other funding partners, including the Forest Service, and they expect to know more about these funding option commitments later this fall, and then once they get to that point, they want to come back and ask for consideration of the county's participation in that project. On the next page is the Position Control Summary. We had, you can see that the unfilled percent is about the same as it was last month. Total staffing has increased since the prior month. We had the addition of two in health services that was approved by the Board, two in community development, that was at the end of August, and three landfill site attendants on August 25th as well. And then, briefly, onto the financials. Return to the TRT Fund 16170, something I want to mention there. I don't have page numbers, but the header is TRT Fund 160/170.
Seventy-three.
Seventy-three? Okay, thank you. So, you'll note that we have a budget of $11.6 million in room tax collections for fiscal '22. This projection was based on a 10% increase on where we were last year. We thought that was a reasonable estimate moving forward. We're two months in so far. We haven't adjusted our projection for the end of the year, but so far, we're two months in, and we're 38% above collections from last, last summer, for July and August. So, just to note that we'll be looking at that again and adjusting that projection moving forward. And I think I'm moving to the Fair Fund, which is, any Fair Funds, 616. Eighty-eight, thank you.
That was my question, Greg. Has the state not given us that grant funding of the $53,000? It's showing up still in the projection, but we haven't received that funding?
Commissioner, which, what are we looking at?
Fund 1616 resources in the middle.
It's actually on page 89. I was just wondering, it looks like it's still, we haven't gotten it actually. It's showing up, you know.
So, we do receive that every year. We received, in fiscal '21, we received $53,167. We just haven't received it yet for fiscal '22. We still have a budget of $52,000, but we haven't received it yet.
Okay.
So, the news here is, as you're all aware, because we've talked about it a few times, but the 616, the Fair Fund, is doing very well, whereas the last year, it's been a real struggle, last couple of years, but it's doing very well this year. look at it fair year basis, if you notice that the projection for 2021 is a net margin of about $394,000. So you can see how that compares to the fair of 2020, which wasn't a fair, but there still were some costs incurred of a loss of $48,000. So our 10-year average for the fair, in terms of margin, is $275,000, and our best year so far, over the last 10 years, was 2016 at $450,000. So we're in a good spot there, and that's some good news, I think, especially after dealing with the challenges with the fair in the last year. So they've really come back real well, especially for throwing the fair, putting the fair together at the last minute like they did. And I believe that's all, all the comments I have. Are there any questions for me?
So is that? Go ahead.
Oh, thank you. I just noticed, I just want to note, for the record, that the transfer station is solid waste, it's still, it's up 19%, and it's 16.7% year-to-date, so that's indicative that we're still having a lot of things happening in Deschutes County.
Maybe this could just wait until Wednesday, but you, you mentioned the mobile morgue, $82,000 discussion. I heard somewhere else that the state might be considering stepping in to, to support that? Do we, do we, do we know whether that's a, a real option at this point, or whether, or should we still be preparing on Wednesday to, to make that decision?
I think that was an early option before the, there was a commitment to use ARPA funds, so I think, at this point, I heard, I heard the same thing as well. At this point, the next logical step would be to go ahead and approve that. And then we can address the asset transfer with St. Charles.
Okay, thank you.
So my understanding is that the state, State Office, Sean Hirst, wherever, whatever office he's from, they offered to do a lease, they could reimburse leases but not purchases, is what, what I heard. So, and as I say, this, I think that's what the story was. So there was money available, but not for purchase, it was only a monthly lease. So then, since we purchased, it's a kind of one-way street. That's what I heard. I had one more note, community development, I can't even figure out what page it's on. Just keep going back and forth through my paperwork here. But it was just kind of something, from my information, as I was looking at and pondering it, the concept of income is from just a couple, you know, the, the. Yeah, okay, thank you. Why am I not seeing my? Oh, here we are, okay. There's my little ticks. Income is from permits, you know, so I think of electrical, plumbing, structural permits. So like, building safety is a $4 million income. Current planning, $2 million income. So this is just kind of high-level questions, maybe it's even for previous community development director, but, and then the expenses, you know, the, the way that building safety and current planning and admin and operations, how the money is spent. So, it's really just permits, and then how, how does current planning and long-range planning get funded, I guess, is, you know, when I read these line items, it kind of wasn't real clear to me about how, the income and expenses. Can you help me with a little bit with that, Nick?
Sure, Commissioner. Current planning is primarily funded by permit fees. Long-range planning is funded by, by grants and general fund on occasion. The other key is that there is an administrative service fee on building permits that then fund the public information counter for, for current planning, and an advanced planning fee for long-range planning.
So then the current, so when there's a income of, for current planning, just a line item, $2 million or so, the number is, that is a line item on the bill for a permit also, is that correct?
Correct, on a building permit fee, yes.
That, that was kind of what I was just getting, getting clarity on. So it's not, it's not a percentage of a fee, it's a line item on the bills for the fees.
Yeah, that's.
I haven't seen that, you know, we had a House bill, but I, and I'm sure there's lots of permits that were pulled, but I just never looked at the detail from the consumer's side, is what I was thinking, you know?
That's correct. And, for example, the, the advanced planning fee, which is long-range planning, for permits that we collect in the cities of Sisters and Lapine, we provide that advance, that long-range planning fee back to those cities, so that they're continuously planning for their future growth and can accommodate their next, the next wave of housing, businesses, et cetera.
Yeah, just some, just some clarity on how the money flows. Thank you. Go ahead. If there's nothing else, next item is discretion of increasing FTE in health services for behavioral health. Item number seven. This is just for discussion, for our acknowledgement and understanding.
Hi, Commissioners. Good to be with you today. Holly Harris, Program Manager, Behavioral Health, and I have with me Molly Wells-Darling, also Program Manager, who will be speaking to her item. So we're here today for a discussion on increasing FTE related to Health Services Fund for Behavioral Health. My portion for the crisis program is related to our weekend day shift employees. We had originally had those be .6 FTE, two of them, to do our Saturday and Sunday weekend shifts at the stabilization center, and we are requesting, or discussing today, the possibility of increasing one of those to a, one, a full-time FTE, to help both with retention and recruitment for that position. We have a .6 that's been vacant for some time, and it's not really receiving any applicants pre-COVID staffing crisis. Our .6 FTE worked really well, because they would want to pick up extra shifts on occasion to provide coverage. So we'd like to keep one of them as is for right now, unless we discover over time that that's not feasible anymore, and we have the funds to change that. But for now, we'd like to move one of them to model after what we've done with our night shift employees, which is the, the 312 work schedule. That's been really great for night shift, it's actually helped retain those staff, they've been very happy with that, and it's also provided us some additional coverage, which has been really helpful for our operations. So we'd like to model that and apply that to one of our weekend day shift operations. We have funds for this through our Impax grant. As you can imagine, we have some vacancy savings accumulating throughout this time that is helping us be able to pay for some of these changes. And of course, we'll always be looking at this long-term as to what makes the most sense for our staffing model, but we continue to learn every single day. So that is the request for the Behavioral Health Specialist II within the crisis program. I'm happy to field any questions you might have about that.
Holly, it sounds like a good idea in order to fill out one of those positions, so just adding .4, 312s, I mean, and then that is considered a full-time employee with Deschutes County, they get full benefits, et cetera?
Correct, they do, and it's a really, and it allows, just, there's that extra four hours in there that, you know, oftentimes, the staff are having to work beyond their typical schedule, and attend trainings and meetings and so forth, so the county benefits from it as well in terms of the flexibility it allows for.
Well, filling those positions, I know is incredibly difficult at this time, so if this, you know, I would think this perhaps could be a big help.
It is, and I know it's working on our night shift, which were even more difficult to fill. We've actually received some applications since some of the changes we've made, so I'm actually feeling really optimistic and hopeful about our future with that, but I've noticed that some of these changes we've implemented and that you all have supported are actually paying off, so thank you for that.
Good. Thank you. Thanks for always, like, thinking out of the box, like, how do we get these positions filled, so?
Thank you, it's definitely stretched me creatively, creatively, so it's, but I'm happy to, happy to see that a lot of it's working. So, if there are no other questions for me, I'll pass it to Molly Wells-Darling to talk about her part.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. For the record, Molly Wells-Darling, Program Manager for Health Services, and I'm here to discuss converting a 1.0 FTE that was originally requested as a peer specialist to a behavioral health specialist one. Originally, the purpose of this position was to work with our access team to improve client engagement for those clients that are coming into services, but as the access team took a look at that position, it really made sense to change it to a behavioral health one specialist, which is like a case manager, because that position can then really work on outreach, identifying and addressing barriers to treatment, and then providing linkages to resources needed to help someone get into treatment, to help them get onto organ health plan, et cetera. And also, with this being a behavioral health specialist one, this position can actually bring in about $20,000 more in revenue than a peer would, through, through the billings that they can provide for. This position is mostly paid for out of our CC BHC PPS payments and behavioral health reserves, and actually, there'll be a savings this year with this position as well because of the late start with getting this hired. That is the overall of this position. I'm open for questions, if you have any questions.
So both of these positions, you know, it's good to be able to dial in the needs and the expectations, getting the positions filled. One of the things I start to see is that, you know, health services just grow in leaps and bounds in all directions, so my thought is really understanding the, you know, FTE per population for the services, general fund, you know, so this is just annual budget thoughts, is what I'm sharing right now, but, you know, there's just a lot of parts and pieces to this, and every time we meet, every, every week or two, we're adding a few people for some reason, so it's just kind of, it's feeling like we're out in a, a little bit of uncharted territory for me, so I just wanted to share that. So this is preparation for a budget cycle, is what I'm referring to. Both of these choices seem prudent at this time, but yeah, as I say, this, this thing called health services, just, I want to understand more as it evolves, so. And this is just for information today, with, this will be a agenda, is it on our agenda for Wednesday already, is that where we're at? Do we know? I guess it's.
That's my understanding.
Yeah, so we'll see it as a, an item for Wednesday's board meeting, on the consent or action, whichever it is. Any other questions or thoughts?
These sound like good changes to help us provide services. Thank you.
Well, and thanks for doing this with us. I mean, it's good to take a moment and understand what we're doing and why, because these could be, you know, a little bit less, less focus on each one of these choices, but it's good to, you know, see the choices, each individually pieces is growing. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Item number nine, well, House Bill 3295, Marijuana Tax Revenue Cannabis Advisory Panel Decisions. So, thanks for joining us, who's?
You skipped one.
Oh, did I?
We have eight.
Maintenance, okay, yep, thank you very much. Item number eight, reallocation of existing facilities department FTE from Maintenance Specialist Two to Maintenance Specialist Three. So I think I saw the word FTE in there, so I just jumped to the next item. Thank you for joining us.
Yes, Commissioners, for the record, Lee Randall, Facilities Director, and?
And for the record, Brian Hayward, Maintenance Supervisor.
So, yeah, what you, we have before you today is a request to reallocate a vacant Maintenance Specialist Two position to a Maintenance Specialist Three position that would specialize in HVAC service. Just to give a little bit of background, we had, up until 2019, we had two HVAC specialist positions, and we had, at that time, reduced that to one position that was focused on, on HVAC repair and maintenance, and then kind of went to a blended approach in utilizing contractors a little bit more. With the growth we've experienced since then, and looking forward into the future, for several reasons, we're here requesting that we convert a vacant Specialist Two position to Three, and then we can go out and hire that position. I noted in the agenda request, a few of those reasons, but they include some of the square footage we've added, some of the anticipated square footage coming up. When we have a project underway, it requires additional work from, especially from our electrical and HVAC team, when it comes to reviewing plans and working on integrating, say, a remodel project into the existing building. So, that all adds some additional work, and so, and then additionally, for staff redundancy. So, currently having one person in that position that can respond to weekend-on-calls, after-hours, as well as when they're gone on vacation, having a second position will help cover that work. So, that's really the request that we have before you, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Any questions? So I know we are adding a couple buildings, we've got quite a bit of maintenance, and then also, knowing that we have had this capacity need in the past, and that we are, as I mentioned, growing our facilities, really good idea to be able to have the two folks to be able to bounce off each other's, especially during, you know, off, off-hours or weekends would be very valuable.
So Lee, you hope you'll be able to get this position filled, maybe by November or something? I know with winter coming, I can imagine that we clearly could use someone additional in this department.
Yes, with the board's support, we would move forward as soon as we could on filling the position. And, and this is kind of, you know, fall and spring are kind of slower times fortunately for HVAC, and then as we move into winter, we know.
The first real cold snap, all of a sudden you find out if things are working or not.
And I think this request would be for County Administrator's signature, but at this time, we're seeking the board's support.
So this will be. Would have to come back for a budget adjustment also to authorize HR to plug in the higher-grade position.
So this would be a miniature motion to show support to move this whole thing forward.
Similar to last item, Commissioners, it'll come back in a likely consent agenda resolution to affect the change.
So we don't need to make a motion right now?
You certainly can, but it, again, is similar to the last one, which you expressed support in your conversation. If you have the same kind of support, that would be fine, to bring it back.
Great.
I'm supportive of this change.
I think sooner than later, especially if we have a winter like we had summer in June, it would be good to, to fill this position, so thank you, Lee, for coming with us with this.
I'm supportive also, so yeah, there's definitely support for that. So thank you very much, sorry, I almost missed your agenda item, you're in the room, and I'm skipping right over you. But yeah, good to see you, and thanks for what you're doing out there.
Thank you.
Okay, item number nine, House Bill 3295, Marijuana Tax Revenue Cannabis Advisory Panel.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the Commission. I wanted to just briefly note that I, I had to bring out the Cal Bear ties.
Oh.
I was hoping that today I would be able, with one of our county administrators' last meeting, be able to acknowledge a victory in Seattle. I was in the Steens over the weekend, and understand that Cal fumbled on the tying possession on the goal line, but I truly was hoping I could wear this tie in front of Nick Leelak and Tom Anderson when Berkeley won the.
Big day for you.
When, yeah, when Cal won the Pac-10, but that's not going to happen this year, but I want everyone to know that the tie is here for when that event happens, so Tom just needed to see it once, over the, I've known Tom since 2004, I never, never dawned it until today, I thought I would take that opportunity, even though it's really just a tie, nothing to, I don't have any, any leg to stand on. Anyway, sorry for that distraction. Wanted to, yes, so today is an opportunity to discuss appointing members to a cannabis advisory panel. It's an opportunity for the board to review the draft charter, and select a meeting date for the cannabis advisory panel. I, I do want to recognize that one of our attendees in person today is a, an applicant for the cannabis advisory panel, it's Liz. It's Liz Lutchevsky, who is spending her afternoon with us, so thank you for attending. Ms. Lutchevsky was a member of the marijuana advisory committee that was formed to provide guidance to the Board of County Commissioners for time, place, and manner regulations for the marijuana industry. My goal, if possible, Commissioners, would be to have you go through table one and identify those representatives who you believe should be considered for the cannabis advisory panel, receive some direction, and then on Wednesday, under other items, I could bring back an updated order, which is an attachment two. I don't know why that says attachment two, it should say attachment one. Well, anyway, it's attachment two. You already have the candidate applications, which was provided under separate cover. Attachment two is the order. I could bring that back under other items for you to formally consider it on Wednesday, as well as what is attachment three, is the cannabis advisory panel charter. It is, we're getting to the point where we need to confirm a meeting date as well. As noted in the memorandum, staff did reach out, per the board's direction, to Representatives Zika and Croft, who were instrumental in establishing House Bill 3295. At the last, I reached out to them, which was several weeks ago, they, I had them hold the date for the week of October 18th. So would like to, if possible, alert them to the date and time for that initial meeting. And of course, we need to let the cannabis advisory panel members block out that date as well. So I'll pause there and entertain whatever options the board believes is appropriate today. We can, if it's appropriate, we could start with table one, but I, Mr. Chairman, I don't want to get ahead of myself.
So my thought is, yeah, let's kind of set the tone, set the direction of this as a board, you know, welcome members of the committee to join us and, you know, go from there. So we'll work through as much as we can today, because this will be a work in progress. Any other comments? Just on the big picture of what we're doing here.
I guess one, to frame the discussion of who's going to take the kind of member of the public at large position, I, there were, there were a number of people who applied who had unique things to offer to this position, and because we didn't really set, we didn't, we didn't say we're really specifically looking for this, I feel like, a little bit like we, we're having a, we face an apples to oranges comparison at this point. There's, there's a lot of people who have various things to offer, you know, background in tax and law, you know, background in, you know, community justice, and how to, you know, kind of keep youth on track who've gotten off track, and, you know, background in, in prior efforts on the earlier cannabis advisory committee, or the earlier marijuana advisory committee. So we can, we can dive into it, but I, I'm, when we get to the point where we're asking, well, which of these potential applicants we want to serve, I'm actually going to, I'd like us to seriously consider a number of the people who submitted applications.
Any thoughts, Commissioner Dare?
Thank you so much, Liz, for being there today, and clearly, I would appreciate Liz being part of this, member of the public, and her attendance today, I think, shows her clear indication that she would appreciate that. And I believe Mary Fleishman is the person you were referring to, and what she has to offer, I think, is maybe the other side of this panel, and, you know, it appears that she could add a lot to, to this group. So I, those are two people that I was thinking I would love to see on the group.
So, yeah, that position, a member of the public, can be a discussion item, obviously, for all of us today. Is the definition of the committee, the committee makeup in statute, or it's kind of up to us, or at least a minimal, minimal committee makeup?
Great question, Mr. Chairman. The, I guess it is under statute now with the legislation. It does acknowledge the representation that's noted in table one, but the board is not limited to that, those seven members. You have discretion to add to it as you see fit. So this is just really a starting point to make us consistent with the legislation.
So, yeah, that's my thought. Let's work our way up to whatever the board's comfortable with in appointing people, is, you know, and we'll, you know, put, put a couple, a couple of these names are pretty straightforward, you know, the, who they represent, the representation, and then we'll go from there. So do we want to start working through this table and see how, how close we are, just getting this kind of finalized? So would we say that any of these names are finalized, or, yeah, I guess they're all, board selections are open for all of these, but nothing's finalized? So I'm just going to go through table one and go step down from the first one and down. So Hunter Newbauer, he was involved in the marijuana advisory committee also, wasn't he? He was, he was there originally. So that was our Deschutes County Advisory Committee. He is a business owner here in town, as I say, so I have, I know him, and I've crossed paths with him many times on this subject. Is there support for that appointment? And this is a person who holds a license, as defined by the state. So this is for the three of us to just nod yes or no, so I'm supportive.
I would be supportive.
Yeah.
Yes.
Yeah, okay, yeah, just making sure. Okay, so that's, we've appointed our first person to the marijuana advisory committee.
I mean, I would also, I would be supportive, but I'd also ask the question, you mentioned that, that Hunter Newbauer had previously served on the marijuana advisory committee back in 2016, 2017? I am, as we look at this, this advisory panel, I definitely am concerned about, about how much this is, this might be viewed as a continuation of the previous committee. My understanding is that that prior committee really focused a lot on time, place, and manner questions, and I think, looking forward towards this, this panel serving, I really would like to not see this panel get very bogged down in those issues, because I feel like they have been resolved to a large degree. I mean, the voters have spoken, the committee did its prior work, we've gotten a lot of legal opinions back, back on, you know, what our, you know, what time and place and manner should look like. So some of the other functions of, of this cannabis advisory panel, you know, as set out by the legislation, I think are higher priorities than this panel working on time, place, and manner issues moving forward.
So this, this is a legislatively defined committee. We're placing, you know, members of our community on the committee for the tax revenue distribution, and it's a recommendation that comes out of this committee to, to the county, to the Board of Commissioners, to the budget process. My thought is, and this is how I started, remember, was setting the, setting the culture or the expectation of this committee. You know, so on one hand, I agree with you, but on the other hand, this is the committee that we can, we, anybody in the community can put stuff out on the table. They go, okay, fine, you know, revenues this, but this is still an issue. So it's going to be interesting. Would we be in a spot where we're going to ask people not to talk about topics of the day, or something that's brought up?
No, I mean, not that, not that we would stifle conversation, I just want it to be clear that the job of this committee is not to relitigate time, place, and manner.
It's been said. So then also, that first meeting, so now we're jumping around a little bit, but that first meeting, the date set with our state representatives to be able to say how we got here, why we think we're here, and really setting the tone of the meeting, I think that's going to be a state rep opportunity, you know, they don't, but, you know, that's the invitation. So we'll get back to the table, but for our state reps, did they say they were available on those three dates, or?
Mr. Chairman, yes. The emails were from several weeks ago, but they expressed their availability during that week, and so I worked with your account, with Sharon Keith and your calendars, and this was easily a month ago.
Yep.
Feels like a month ago, and had them hold the date.
Yeah, and there's a placeholder on all of our calendars for those three days.
And if I may, I think in light of the conversation about the marijuana advisory committee and this rule, I'd also remind you that there's, there is a charter as well that is a draft that also expresses the intent and purpose behind this cannabis advisory panel. So again, of course, other issues can certainly be discussed, but that charter was deliberately constructed to provide clear expectations about what its purpose is going forward.
And another way to do this is, you know, these, you know, if there's a convening of this group, state representatives talk about how we got here, why we got here, we have the history of where we're, you know, why we're here, why this group is brought together. Soon as an issue comes up that looks like it's outside the charter, it just puts, gets put, you know, on a list of items that came up during this meeting that aren't in, in the domain of the decision space, you know, because that, that's fine. And it was like that this whole time, you know, this came on, there was not a lot of common ground, there's a lot of passion on the subject, and if there's still issues that come up, let's document them. Okay, so let's get back to item number two, or person, position number two, person who holds a license issued under O R S for premises located in the county. So this is rural retail. We happen to have two, two authorized businesses, and both people have offered to participate. I don't have, you know, any, other than flipping a coin or putting them both there, I don't really have a reference to priority at this time. Is anybody else?
Do we know who applied first?
Oh, yeah, the first one that filled out the form.
Well, we, I mean, we solicited these.
Yeah, but these are both, there's two, and they both have said yes, that they'd like to participate.
Yeah, one is the alternate, you know, the first one that applied, yes, and then the next one, alternate.
That's what I meant when I said we solicited these. I mean, if we solicited them, then, then it's not like one applied before the other.
So, if I may.
Please.
You're testing my, my archiving system. So I, I did send an email on July 14th to both of them, and Matt Hurt responded, oh my gosh, they both responded on the same day. Matt Hurt responded at...
Do we have any idea whether these two business owners know each other? I mean, if we, I mean, conceivably, if we, if we told them that they were both in the pool, that maybe they would, maybe one of them would just say, oh, well, you should do it.
Well, both were emailed, I mean, I emailed both of them, and, you know, so they were aware of that, that I was reaching out. Of course, I didn't express any, any limitation.
But you, but you, but they were both on the same email?
Correct. They were both on the same email, and, I mean, if you're, you're counting minutes, yeah, one responded approximately three hours before the other on the same day. So I sent it on July 14th, and they responded one day later.
So, but I mean, that shows you that it was a, an item they both were motivated to respond to also. So we're in, we're all in that same spot, you know, I don't, as I say, either one's going to be fine with me. I don't have a feel for why one would be selected over the other at this point in time. Yeah. Does somebody want to, maybe a Commissioner want to just call them both and have a discussion real quick, just like you're mentioning, or, or staff is fine? I mean, this is our appointment, I guess, is the thing. So if, so this will be the first item that we, it's not going to be complete today possibly, so I'm just acknowledging now, we'll probably have a couple of these I could see from today.
I could call them.
Yeah, if you'd like to. Just call them both, let them know their situation.
Peter, if you can just share their...
Is that a, is that a, okay, Commissioner Dare?
Oh, yes, I think that's fine.
Okay, good.
I'm happy to call them too, if Commissioner Chang doesn't want to, so.
He's offering.
Yeah.
Okay, so then, the next item, thank you very much, Commissioner Chang, for doing that. As I say, we're all, come to find out, we're all in the same spot on that. So the sheriff has put forward Dustin Miller, or that's just, that's his position already, is a detective in the drug enforcement? So I'm supportive of that name.
Yes, I support having Dustin, I think that's, he's a critical key.
No one, no one understands where the black market production is happening better than he does.
There we go, okay, we're getting there. So then, designee of the county commission. So my thought is, I think we all maybe have offered to be on this committee, is that true?
Is it true? Of course it's true.
Yes?
I would, I'd be willing to serve on that.
Yeah, okay, so all three of us are saying yes. I definitely want to be there for the first meeting at least, so how about we acknowledge that the first meeting is attended, I mean, it's going to be a public meeting anyways, but for all three of us to be in attendance of the first meeting. And then after that, if we want to make a decision about one of us attending, or however we want to proceed, as I say, I can just see it, all three of us would be, maybe we're all going to be there. If it's quarterly, it's maybe that, not much of an overhead either. So how about we just leave all three of us on for this first meeting, and we can go from there?
Is that, is that okay to proceed? Peter, like that?
I, I don't see any problem, and the, the order will, can include all three, and I presume, as long as we're meeting the minimum requirements of these quarterly meetings, that's what we need to document and demonstrate that we're administering this legislation as intended. So for now, I would put all three. Of course, the board can always update the order as, as things change, but that's how I would propose bringing it back to you for, for final consideration.
So then, it puts us in a spot of who's going to run the meeting, as in, this will be setting up the, kind of the, the culture, but also just the mission statement and decision. So if this is, you know, an official recommendation to the Board of Commissioners, is, is the board running the meeting, somebody from the board running the meeting, or would somebody else run the meeting? I don't know if it's defined at all in the legislation, I have a hunch. They didn't give any, yeah, so that'll be a decision, so a guidance of us as a Board of Commissioners to, you know, who's going to chair the meeting? Would it be a Commissioner by default or not? And I'm just laying it out here, any thoughts?
Peter, do we know whether the, the two legislators are interested in participating long-term, or just for the first meeting?
Commissioner Chang, I, if, I can't say that definitively. If I had to make an educated guess, I think their interest is intending, attending the first meeting, reflecting the board's invitation about the creation of the cannabis advisory panel, and then I would just making educated assumptions that, once the panel's established, they would defer to local administration, and to the extent that there was an interest or a desire to bring them back, you know, I would imagine they would be open to that, but given, this is, this is created at the local level, I wouldn't see them as regular attendees, although, again, that's just how I'm reading the tea leaves at this time.
That was, that was my one other thought, in terms of who might be appropriate to chair these meetings, but if, if we don't know if they're interested in participating long-term, I wouldn't want to try to nominate one of them. Well, if we're, if we're not clear yet whether one or all three of us are going to participate on this, maybe we could just rotate it, as long as, as long as...
The three of us?
Yeah.
Well, and I'm referring to the chair in the meeting. Well, and I'm referring to chair in the meeting, would it be a commissioner, or is this an advisory commission to the, advisory committee to the commission? So, we would participate and not run the meeting? So, that's, that was my question. So, you're assuming that we would by saying that, but I was even a half a step away from that.
We could...
So, any thoughts, Commissioner Dare?
Another option would be to let the, let the group that meets elect someone to serve as chair, from amongst them?
Well, and if all three of us are there representing the board, we may, are we have three votes or one vote?
Yes, how many votes do we have? That's a very excellent point to bring up. I would think we would really only have one vote. I mean, if we're asking people to be part of this, yeah, I know, looking at it, you wonder, I would think, yeah, you just would want a chair from the group, but not us?
Yeah.
We could also just not vote, then.
These are the things we need to work through.
And, Mr. Chairman, just to help the conversation, staff, I anticipate, you know, likely next week, having, assuming, I don't want to be presumptuous, but assuming that the panels created, the data's set, the invitations have been made, then I think staff would work with the board, we'd present a draft agenda.
Yeah.
And in that draft agenda, that one of the conversations could be, you know, the consideration of nominating a chair. So, I don't think, I guess the point of saying this is, I don't think you have to solve this riddle now, we can come back and give you time to think about it. And again, you know, if the meeting occurs on the week of October 18th, we have a couple of meetings to fine tune that, and that'll probably happen quarterly, to share that, those draft agendas, whoever is the entity at the staff level that's going to be serving this panel for the foreseeable future.
Well, so then, I think we should even, you know, kind of reverse engineer the content of the decision space, as in, if we have this committee set up, and, you know, there's a parking lot for issues that are not in the domain of this committee, or, or they are, I don't know, you know, I don't know what we're going to do exactly, what is the decision space? It's an advisory panel recommending distribution of dollars, so if there's a dollar, how are you going to cut it up? You know, how are you going to send 50 cents one way and 50 cents another way? And if that's the only real official decision, yeah.
Well, there are these, there are three, there are three functions laid out, three purposes laid out in this charter. The dollars, public safety measures, and, you know, issues presented by the production, processing, wholesaling, or distribution. So...
Yeah, well, and I'm referring to, if that's the agenda, you know, here's your three questions, what are we going to do with the dollars, what are we going to do with the, you know, the issues, and, you know, so if those are the three issue, three agenda items, well, it'll set the culture of this thing for a while, once we start to do it. Okay? Okay, so, the three commissioners are going to be involved for the first meeting, discussion of chair will be evolving, maybe more clarity before the first meeting. Okay, next item is member of the public. We have six people, we do have resumes, we want to thank people that have applied with a, an application. Commissioner Chang mentioned that, yeah, there's different types of applications here, as in, maybe even the mindset of what they're applying for could be varied, you know, varied. So, yeah, are there any thoughts or recommendations? So, I mean, I can tell you, I've gone through the applications, but I, now that we're even talking, I can see that we've got to figure out how we want to proceed.
So, Commissioner Dare mentioned wanting to nominate Liz, and also being interested in Mary Fleishman. I would, that the first application, Andrew Assen, I'm not sure if that's how you pronounce his name, sitting on the Soil and Water Conservation District Board, I actually thought that that was an interesting potential perspective to add to this committee. I feel like we, I feel like people are very frequently talking about water when they are talking about marijuana production, and often, the discussion has, is not very founded in actual data and information, so having someone with that kind of perspective could be useful in that way, you know, kind of the soil, you know, what does this do in terms of soil impacts, or water impacts, or water quality impacts, things like that? So, you know, I think considering at least those three would be, would be good, and I do, you know, Jeremy Dickman, who has a legal background and a tax background, I think, you know, conceivably, that could also be a very useful perspective to have on this panel, but...
Oh, I did want to make note, on Andrew's application, he put that he's on the Disused Soil and Water District from January 21 to January 21. So, I don't know if you noticed that on the top of page two, maybe he's trying to say 23 or 22 or something? Did you see that, Commissioner Chang?
I did not see those dates.
Okay.
But I, you know, having, having known a number of the Soil and Water Conservation District Board members in the past, I, yeah, I definitely noticed that he was new.
Okay, I mean, is he, I mean, is he January of 21 till like, I mean, is it usually a three-year term appointment, or, anyway?
They're, they're elected positions, and...
Okay.
They're, I believe they're four-year terms. So, I don't, I don't know any more than, than that about this specific member.
Okay.
Or, sorry, director, that's their, that's their titles. Sometimes people rotate out, and then they appoint other people into those positions. I actually believe, I'm not sure. I know that, I know that Colin Wells left the SWCD Board sometime in the last year or so, so maybe this is, maybe Andrew was appointed in.
So, there's a couple of people I'd like to talk to on here, so I really don't have a specific recommendations unless I talk to one or two of them, and I'm thinking probably Andrew and Jeremy and Dustin, so, I mean, those are just people, I see their resumes, but I don't have a good feel for them, and, so half of them I'd like to talk, and I mean, then I may want to talk to all of them, but I'm just thinking there's three of them I'd like to just communicate with, just to get to know who they are. Or, we just make some appointments today, because anybody's available to provide input to this committee. I mean, the domain of the decisions in this committee, the few domain items we're going to ask for recommendations on, plus other items that show up, you know, maybe all six of these people will follow this committee the whole time anyway, so. So, I don't have a good feel for putting direction to this. Are there any thoughts? We want to just appoint a few today, or appoint somebody today, or bring this whole group back in the near future? As I say, I'm not too strong on this either.
So, I guess a question would be, are all three of us open to the idea of multiple appointments to this public member role?
Yes, I would agree with that.
Yeah.
I think we could have two or three from this group. I think it would be important.
And I'm there, too, yeah. So, that was kind of my thought process.
So, then, you know, these sort of apple and orange, you know, different, different people who would bring, you know, different really valuable things to this group, we don't have to, we don't have to cut it down to just one.
Peaches and pears from Oregon, right?
Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, if it's helpful, maybe what, I gather there's an interest in reaching out to the marijuana retail representatives, that may take a couple of days. I don't have their phone numbers, I just emailed them and letting, let them know that Commissioner Chang is interested in reaching out and just having a brief conversation. It might make sense to identify a date and time if you're still interested in the week of October 18th, and reschedule, I can come back on...
Way backwards.
On the 4th, and that gives the board, you know, a soft week to reach out to applicants, conduct your own conversations, and, and then it puts us in a position, all things being equal, on October 6th to finalize an order and a charter. I just don't want to rush you, but I do feel like we need to lock down a date...
Yeah.
Just so I can let our state representatives know if you think that would be, again, just trying to be helpful, knowing that in the blink of an eye, we're going to be in October, and want to provide that courtesy to everyone.
Well, so, yeah, so, let's do some homework on the member of the public position. I like the idea of, you know, backtracking from the date of the meeting and making sure we have that position, decision made, and I'm looking at the next two. So, a water master is Kyle Gorman, or designee, so, you know, let's acknowledge that, I don't know that there's any... And then the next one is Gary Braceline, is a member for economic development.
Conceivably, Kyle could delegate down, down the chain at OWRD if he, if he wanted to.
So, but that's an official water master position, so I think that's okay, you know, so I would support Kyle Gorman or designee also.
Okay.
Are you okay with that, Commissioner Dare? Okay, I think she mouthed yes, and then...
I believe that, that there's a couple of...
I said yes. I said it on mute, sorry.
I believe that there's a couple of people in the region under, you know, under Kyle's umbrella who bear the title water master, so.
And that's fine. Okay, so then, last one is a representative of the county who is knowledgeable about economic development. So, I know Mr. Braceline is, is in the industry, but is in the, in multiple industries, recreation also, so I'm supportive of that position, that, you know, Gary, for that position. Any other thoughts?
I believe he was recommended by Edco, right?
Yes.
That's a pretty good, I mean, that's a pretty good endorsement, in my opinion.
And I was just acknowledging, I know he's in...
That's me.
You're all right with that, Commissioner Dare?
Yes.
Okay, good, moving on. So, let's jump to the date, because that's the other thing to backtrack to our other item there, so I had my hand, my phone in hand. So, Monday, Tuesday, or Wednesday, October 18, 19, or 20, an evening meeting at 6:00. The sun's starting to go down earlier these days, so it'll feel like it's getting late at that time. Any thoughts for the commissioners on one of those dates being better than another?
I would...
Monday sounds fine.
What's that?
I thought Monday sounded fine.
I would prefer not Wednesday, but one, Monday or Tuesday would, either one would work for me.
Okay. Well, specific for Monday, and Monday sounds like it could work, so Monday, the 18th will be the primary date, and if it doesn't work, we'll slip to Tuesday, but the 18th will be the date then.
Great. And, Mr. Chairman, just to be clear, as noted in footnote five, I presume it will be, the meeting format will allow those that want to attend in person to do so, as well as the electronic option using Zoom?
So, if this room, it'd be here, correct, this room?
Yeah, in coordinating with Sharon, I had her block out these rooms for the three dates that were listed.
So, I'll acknowledge, yeah, this room is available, I would advocate for in-person, and opening up the door and spreading out if we need to, I mean, whatever is the appropriate protocol at the time, but a much better interaction in person, especially for the first meeting.
And you had mentioned, just, sorry, just to focus on these finer points, when we first talked about this in July or August, I can't remember if you wanted to have any kind of food available for this kickoff meeting, so I asked the question just so you make informed decisions.
It is a 6:00 meeting.
Maybe we could do something like we did with the, with County College, and offer food earlier, and people could hang out outside and eat, and then come in with...
Yeah, we can figure that out, yeah.
So, yeah, we have had a simple sandwich or boxed meal available, so, yeah, let's do that for the first one.
Great. I think this is all, did you have something?
Yeah, thanks, Peter, just a couple of quick thoughts. Attachment three, Peter's done a very nice job creating a charter for the, for the panel. The board might want to think about, we can include the chair, and what that process might look like. It could look like the planning commission, the committee, the panel elects a chair on an annual basis, and then it changes annually, something of that nature. We can come up with something like that, number one. Number two, the board might think about whether there's terms for, is it a three-year term, or is it a two-year term, or is there a duration of time that, and then if so, we could include that in the charter as well. And then what the board might think about is, this time, all three commissioners are going to participate, but then the commissioners might just think annually about which commissioner serves as the liaison to this panel, just as the commission does with all panels and committees. And then we can, just think about those things, and then we can flesh those out in the charter. I would refer to Amy on whether the attachment two, the order would need to include the terms for, for members, because this would just establish the members initially, if the commission's interested in terms, two years, three years, four years, as opposed to lifetime appointments like the Supreme Court, maybe there's a shorter duration.
And I would suggest using staggered terms, so that we have some continuity with the group, but, you know, not, some people get appointed for a two-year term, some for a three, and I think that would help a lot, too.
Well, so then, not all positions may be that way, so I'm just thinking the sheriff, designee, and the water master, maybe just those two would be kind of outside, you know, just recommendation positions, so there wouldn't be terms possibly for all positions. But I support that.
Okay, we'll come back on Monday. We'll coordinate on that in the next couple of days, and put that together for you for October 4th.
So, do we support the fact that a county commission seat would be one vote, even if the three of us are in the same room?
I would support that, although we're also kind of, we're...
Or would it be ex officio?
Yeah, I mean, that's another possibility. I mean, we were just talking about what, what is this group doing?
Yeah.
They're making recommendations, so...
Because we still have the authority in the end, it's, well, and that's, yeah, it'll be interesting. Any thoughts, Commissioner Dare?
With that in mind, I actually really like the idea of ex officio more.
Yeah.
Yeah, because the cap is advisory to the board.
Yeah.
So, you will have the ultimate decision over what the panel recommends to you.
Well, the important thing is, we have these meetings so that we do have our funding reinstated, and I think it's really good that we're having this first meeting, October 18th, to get going, so that...
Yeah, I mean, so on one hand, I mean, you know, so, a sitting detective from the sheriff's office, voting on something, you know, I mean, we got to really kind of even think about what we're doing here, and I don't know how controversial or how, you know, what kind of topics are going to end up being even voted on, other than, you know, the charter itself, the basics, but if, other items could bring in other items.
And, Mr. Chairman, I think just the acknowledgement that the order, order could change to reflect a broader understanding of what this group does over time.
Yep.
The charter also could reflect that.
Yep.
I mean, it's not meant to be a static document, and I think if we can put these documents with the help of legal and county administration, so that we're, it's an auspicious beginning, then, you know, this will be an iterative process. beginning, then, you know, this will be an iterative process. It has to be, and I think that's kind of what the legislation reflects. So, I, I wouldn't agonize too much on the front end, as long as we can capture your thoughts, your interests, in a, in a working framework.
Yeah.
You know, we can, this group will meet quarterly, and there may be times, you know, semi-annually, annually, it just needs to be tinkered with as relationships are forged and the conversations mature.
Yeah. Well, and that's why I figure it's good to talk it out right now, so we can all kind of understand what we're doing here. So, is there anything else?
I don't have anything.
Yeah, so, there'll be a version of what we think we're doing here. We, we took it down the track a little farther just now.
I will, today, I will let our state representatives know of that date.
Yep.
And, and I'll let Sharon Keith know as well, and then all the other pieces we'll work on over the next couple of days. So, thank you very much for the conversation. I really appreciate it.
Okay.
Thank you for all your work on this, Peter.
Thank you, Peter.
Item number 10, DLCD 2123 Technical Assistance Grant Discussion.
Thank you, Chairman. Thanks, Commissioners, for the record. My name's Tarek Rawlings. I'm an associate planner with the Community Development Department. And yeah, just as you'd said, today, we're seeking approval from Board of County Commissioners to apply for a 2021 to 2023 DLCD Technical Assistance Grant. That's the Department of Land Conservation and Development. This would be directed at two main goals, or objectives. One would be to continue initiating essentially, we've, we've started some processes of the comprehensive, the county's comprehensive plan update, and this would be directed at continuing that work to actually initiate that update and, and see it through as far as we could within that, that two-year cycle. The other component that would be funded by this request would be a Terrebonne Community Plan Update, so that's still a component of the county comprehensive plan, but this would be specific to that community, kind of in line with some of the sewer feasibility study findings, things like that. There's a lot of concern for water conservation and irrigation in that area. It's already on the work plan, as you, as you're probably well aware, and this would just be a way to work that into the larger comp plan update, find some extra funding for it potentially, and all with the understanding that this is part of kind of our, a benefit of the delayed initiation of the comprehensive plan process, is that one, one aspect of those benefits is we'd be able to apply for this. Should we be granted it, we'd have an extra $100,000 of funding to direct towards these updates. And then a third component, really, that relates to the previous two, the comp plan update and the Terrebonne Community Plan Update, is this outreach and community involvement plan. Under DLCD direction for grant compliance this year, there's kind of an equity and inclusion series of, of, series of criteria, and one of those sets of criteria is directed at creating kind of this equity and inclusionary public involvement process that can inform things like the comp plan update or the Terrebonne Community Plan Update. So, those three items are largely what we're requesting funding for. We have a total request of $100,000. That would be directed towards those projects, and then we are meeting that with, with some direct contributions from the county and some in-kind contributions as well. And with that, I think an overarching benefit as, as well is that this is an activity and community involvement for the Terrebonne community, finding out what the unique challenges and, and, you know, and kind of the outcomes of any kind of public engagement specific to that community might be. This is going to help us no matter what, really provide detail and characteristic to that community, should it be used to inform the comp plan later, or just, just for next steps for that community in general. So, with that, I'm available for any questions you guys might have.
No questions for me?
And ultimately, there's a, in your agenda packet, there's a letter of support from the board. We're ultimately seeking a signature from each of you on that to include with our submittal to, to DLCD.
So, I, I have a couple of questions.
Sure.
So, the, the comp plan was scoped originally, not thinking about these funds, if I understand correctly. So, if we are able to secure these funds, is there more that we'll do on the comp plan, because we're, we have these supplemental funds, than we had originally scoped out? Or is this, does this just kind of like shore up the, the financial certainty that we'll be able to complete the comp plan process?
Yeah, excellent question. I think the latter is largely kind of a, a big benefit to this whole thing. We can pad the process with additional funding, whether that creates new findings, new information, or whether that just allows us to continue with sort of this pre-scoped process. I think it's, it's a little bit of both. With that, I think the Terrebonne Community Plan, we saw an opportunity in using some of those recommendations from the engineering team for the sewer feasibility study. And so, in that sense, you could make that connection, that some of this funding is directed toward these, these new initiatives that might not have been included in that original scope, but are, again, they're already, the Terrebonne Community Plan Update's already in the work plan. This might really just give us some, some more detail for, for now. I think that it, it kind of lends itself to both of those options you had mentioned, Commissioner Chang.
Thank you. And then going specifically on the Terrebonne Community Plan, one of the things I want to understand is, you know, does this help that community develop a clearer vision and a more shared or common vision for its future? As we, you know, as the county has addressed the Highway 97 issues, as we're talking about the wastewater concerns in, in Terrebonne, I, I'm not, I don't have a really good understanding of what people, what people want, you know, what the people of that community want for their community in the long term. And I, I think that that actually could, you know, could potentially inhibit that community from getting the things that it, it needs, or working on the things it needs to be working on to kind of get where they want to go. You know, the wastewater issue is, I, I mean, we're at, we're basically at crisis response at this point. It's not, it's not a real forward-looking proactive kind of, what do we, you know, what kind of water and wastewater infrastructure do we need to develop to have the kind of community we, we want to have? It's, it's more like, you know, we're at the, we're at the brink of having a, you know, groundwater contamination crisis. So, like, how do we just do something to, to kind of avoid that? And so, I, I guess, so whatever, I'm sorry. So, where I'm trying to go with this is, does the, does this community planning process help develop that kind of clear and shared vision for the community of, of what they want Terrebonne to be in 10 years or 20 years?
Yeah, and I, I do think we can definitively say this would be very helpful for exactly the public involvement kind of hearing from the constituents themselves as to what they, the community they would like to see. That's, that's, I think, twofold. In planning generally, you get technical information and technical recommendations, then you have public input. And I think that with Terrebonne, you've had, you know, a pretty long period of having technical information, technical studies, things like that, offered by professionals and engineers and things like that, that speak to community problems and potential solutions to those. That is always, and certainly right now, an aspect to this comprehensive planning process. The other aspect that's, that's more highlighted in this grant application is exactly that public involvement aspect. So, setting up, finding where the best places to set up meetings might be, and then holding public engagement meetings, making sure there are times where people are off work or have availability, and then truly asking broad questions about what they want to see in the community related to how we can update the actual structure of the Terrebonne Community Plan. There's certain, you know, headings and structure to it and things like that, but exactly, that's the preliminary first and kind of most important step of this, is to really hear from the public as to what, what they want to see out of this process. And I do think, sorry, just as an added benefit, that outreach and public involvement plan that's now required as part of the Equity and Inclusion Initiative, that not only works to capture the unique characteristics as really kind of quantified by the, the public themselves, but it, it's designed specifically to highlight minorities and priority populations. And so, we've seen this population rise in the county. We're seeing a lot more diversity, and so this, this can, twofold, kind of offer insight into that, those priority populations as well.
Great. Thank you, Tarek.
So, it's a request to DLCD for $100,000 Technical Assistance Grant. Is there a motion?
I move approval of staff's request to apply for the DLCD 2021-23 Technical Assistance Grant.
My second to motion.
Okay, any other discussion? Seeing none, Commissioner Chang?
Yes.
Commissioner Dare?
Yes.
And Chair votes yes?
Thank you very much, Commissioners.
Good discussion. Thank you.
Absolutely. Just a small reminder, this is due on October 1st, and so I'll, I'll probably call around for the signatures in the next day or two, if that's all right.
Get it signed next week or so.
Okay.
Oh, no, wait a minute. That's the problem. I see.
Something someone would have worked
Do you need all three signatures, or just one?
There is a spot holder for all three signatures. If that's, if there's any way I can help streamline that, please let me know. I can see what I can do. Yeah, thank you very much, Commissioners. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Item number 11, Discussion of Possible Update for Resolution: Establishing Policy on Undocumented Structures.
Good afternoon, everybody. For the record, my name is Chris Gracia. I'm the Assistant Billing Official, and I have Angie Havner. She's the Community Development Administrative Services Manager. And we are here to present and ask for the board's approval of Resolution 2021-069. And like you've mentioned, it's a process that's, that will help folks get through their issues of undocumented structures, their unpermitted structures, or structures that originally had permits that didn't go through the whole inspection process and, and were expired without all of their inspections, either, you know, whatever they may be up to a final inspection. So, just a little bit of background on, on this. This, this resolution that we're talking about today is actually just an updated version of a resolution that was approved back in 1993. That was Resolution 93-112. And in that original resolution, the, the previous board recognized a few facts that are still relevant and true today. A few of those are that there are significant, significant amount of unpermitted work in the county, that county permit records are incomplete prior to January of 1988, the county lacks resources to individually assess each property, and the county should establish a process to potentially legitimize these, this unpermitted work. And that comes, that process is, is illustrated in Appendix A. So, the reason why we updated, we thought it was important to update this resolution, as you know, we're in a, in a huge real estate boom, and with that real estate boom comes, you know, citizens trying to sell their properties and, and either doing, through the due diligence of the sale, through the prospective buyer, or just their own intimate knowledge of, of unpermitted work on their property, they come to us trying to get that resolved. And so, with this boom, it's just a massive increase in those inquiries. The other, the other thing that kind of motivated us to look at this again was the recent approval of ADUs at the state level. So, we understand that there's got to be hundreds, if not thousands, of unpermitted structures in the, in rural county and in City of Sisters in the Pine, along with unpermitted work, whether it's plumbing, mechanic, or electrical. And so, we know that once these, the, the ADU bill requirements are finalized, they're going to be coming out of the woodwork, or at least we foresee that happening. And so, we're trying to get ahead of the curve. And the other thing, reason why we wanted to update this resolution was it was, it was lacking in specifics, really. And so, what that ended up enabling was the county taking a little bit more liability on than we think that they, we should by providing onsite inspections and kind of going through with each individual homeowner on what it is that they needed to, to fix. And we've found that problematic, because it's, it's very easy for us in a, you know, in a short inspection time to, to capture everything. You know, we have a condition where we had a gentleman, just for a quick example, had a, they were turned into code enforcement, went out, excuse me, I don't know if they were code enforcement or not, but either way, there was work done without permits on the structure. I went out to do an inspection, realized that I just happened to look inside a access panel that was kind of hot, covered, and I looked in there and I realized that there was the concrete that I saw on the outside of the building was just a ribbon that they had poured around. It was just nothing but rotted floor joists, no concrete foundation, nothing. And it was a two-story house, and basically, what ended up, what it was, is we had an old shed that was built in the 70s, and it had been added on to over the years. So, you know, had, had I done a normal inspection list like we, we had been doing the last few years, I probably would have missed that. And, and, and so, a few months later, we realized that this gentleman had put his house on the market, and in this kind of a market, we have people buying a site on scene from out, out of state. And so, we were concerned at that time that somebody would have bought this property, even if they would have gone through the checklist that I would have made for them, because I wouldn't have seen everything, potentially got a final permit and to, and that new buyer would have had no idea really what the, what went into this permit process. And they would have purchased a two-story home with no foundation. So, all of these things really, really brought to a head, and we, we thought that we really needed to get back into this 93-112, revise it for today's environment, and some of the technology that we have online now that we didn't in 1993, and really get a, a better product. If we're, if the county's going to take some liability and responsibility to permit these structures, we really thought it was beneficial to, to put the owners more back on the homeowner and let them kind of do their initial footwork by working with private industry, third-party inspectors, and, and just, you know, put the owners on them to tell us what they're seeing is lacking building code-wise structurally or, or other. And then we could then, you know, look at those, those documents and, and address it in kind of a more efficient and equitable manner, because before it wasn't very equitable, and it wasn't very efficient. And so, that's, so that's kind of the reason why we, we decided to update this resolution. Some of the major changes that we've done, we've updated Appendix A to be more, more user-friendly document for customers and staff. It's something that we can fill out one time after we do the research, and we can give that paper to the homeowner. They can take it and use it to work through the, through the issues. At that time, we will scan that to a new record type, and so all that information will always be there. One of the things that we find is that they will come in, somebody will come in, talk to the front counter staff and get some information. We'll, we'll tell them what we think we, they need to know. They'll leave, and then they'll come back a week later and ask somebody else all the same questions, and it's just a, it's just a repeating pattern that wastes a lot of county resources and time. So, we really think this is going to be a great addition to that. You know, again, like I say, that information will be held in, on their property record for, in perpetu, and forever, and, and so it'll always be available. And that's, that's about all we have. Do you have any questions that we can answer, or?
So, the 1993 resolution is basically mirrored in a new resolution, but it's the Appendix A, which is the tool that's been updated, correct?
Correct, Commissioner. Yeah, we, and so the, the original Appendix A was very, it was a lot of words, but it really was confusing, and you had to read it over and over and over again to figure out what it was saying. So, we thought we would take that Appendix A and just really put it into a checklist form, and, and just to make it easier to use.
So, my only one thought is proposed action, right, in the front page, you know, remove, demolish, conversion. What about maybe putting remove and demolish afterwards instead of, I mean, is that our, our mindset, is you need to demolish or remove? Oh, how about we obtain required permits? You know, it's just kind of a, turn it around, make maybe a little more friendly that way, but, I mean, I don't, if that's
I, the
If that's the message you have.
Yeah, I totally understand, Commissioner. And that's, and absolutely, we can, we can switch that around. I will tell you that there's a few other jurisdictions. There's quite a few. Matter of fact, all jurisdictions have some sort of process to deal with these kinds of
Yeah.
Issues. And not, not all of them are in written, but the ones that I have read in written form, the first thing they do say is, is that it's always the, you know, the owner's prerogative to remove all the more, demo the work and start over.
Yeah, well, I mean, just, just put, remove, and demolish after conversion and obtain required permits, just
Yeah, absolutely.
Especially with the value of things going up. It's like, you want me to demolish that? That's worth a half a million dollars.
Absolutely understand.
Just one thought. Anything else?
I, I wanted to ask about the role of third-party inspectors in, in all of this. So, so basically, if, if someone wants to legalize their existing, you know, undocumented structure, there would, there would always be a third-party inspector involved in verifying the information that they're, that they're submitting to that they're, that they're submitting to you? Is that...
Commissioner Chang, yes, well, how we kind of envision this process going is that the customer would, would come to us and they would, you know, they would describe what their, what their situation is, and they would bring us pictures or any other documents that they have, inspection sign-off cards or anything like that. And once those are submitted, that's really the beginning of the process, and then they will be forwarded to either myself or our lead building inspector for review. And just in our, you know, in our experience and knowledge that we have, we'll kind of look at those pictures and, and say, well, it looks right off the bat that you don't meet prescriptive construction, maybe there's a whole wall of windows, and we, we know there's not enough racing. So we'll start to identify some, some big-ticket items that will, that will, you know, kind of inform us what we're asking for, and that may be an engineer, engineer inspection report, might be some electrical testing, plumbing, it really just depends on what the project entails and where we go from there. But it would be a third-party, we, it's, it, all of the inspections would be done by a third-party private industry until it gets to a final inspection, and then we will call us. Once permits are issued, we will come out and make sure that there's just nothing that, something that the third-party didn't miss. And then, of course, we always have the, I mean, we're always going to provide customer service. So if there's, if there's situations where it's just like, hey, this isn't working out, this, the paperwork chasing back and forth, this really isn't working out, then we'll, we'll always have the opportunity to go out and do a site visit. This really is just trying to be a more efficient process, because we, we get approximately 100 of these inquiries, or, excuse me, we, we issue approximately 100 INV investigative permits that we're trying to get away from, that's really why we're trying to make this a, a handout type of, picture-type handout exchange, because it just takes so much time.
Did you say INV?
INV is how we've done it for the last few years.
What's the terminology?
INV is an investigative permit. So, so right now, before, before you approve this, we have taken that 93-112, and we've kind of worked along in the last 30 years with it. Up until about six or seven years ago, it was very loose, it was basically, they came and submitted what they had on, on paper, we would do a plan review and either approve it or not, typically we'd get it to approval, and then the inspector would go out there to do a final, and it didn't look anything like, like what they had submitted, right? And so that got us, got us to thinking, well, maybe we need to do a site visit. Okay, well, so we started those site visits a few years ago, and they just became very, very onerous and very time-consuming, and so we just, we just felt like we needed to dial back and, and come up with a better solution. You're off from your question.
Well, yeah, just, you said INV, and then I didn't know what the term, so investigative.
Yeah, so it was investigative, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Yeah, that is, Commissioner, that is how we document it within our computer program of Exella, it's a record type.
Yeah, okay.
Special inspection we refer to, or an INV.
So is a special inspection the same as an INV? Yeah, okay, so a special inspection is what I tell people when they call. We've, we've had this bathroom, you know, we think we're going to be in trouble and this and that, I'm like, okay, well, let's call it a special inspection, but yeah, so, because I've been on the receiving end of those, people get panicked when they try to sell it the last minute sometimes.
Yeah, it's our documentation internally within Exella, it's our program, and they reference it as an INV, which is the same as a special inspection.
Yep, that's good, thank you.
But that relies on county staff going out and giving them a specific list on what to fix. And again, we're trying to get away from that because of the liability and, and just the lack of resources. We, you know, each one of these inspections, special investigation, is three to five hours of staff time, of just the initial inspector's time, not to include permit text time and, and just, you know, that's, it's three to five hours plus.
But it ends up being a lot of consulting and...
Back and forth.
Education for the property or homeowner, yeah.
And, you know, and it, and at the beginning, so, at the beginning, we thought it was a useful tool, and it was, but it ended up being where, once people realized that you can just call the county and they'll send somebody right out for $100 and tell you everything you needed to do to fix your...
Pretty valuable.
Yeah, it was a great deal, and I would get it out there, and it, sometimes it smelled like the paint was still wet. So, it really didn't, it really didn't do anybody any good, you know, the, the only, the only person that benefited was the homeowner trying to sell their house. It didn't benefit the county, doesn't benefit future homeowners, because they don't know what they're getting. And so at least this way, we're going to get a real, true understanding of what the electrical system looks like, what the plumbing system looks like, is, does an engineer feel like it's structurally sound? And just so you understand, that may not be required on all projects, you know, we're not out to just, you know, hammer these people because they did something unpermitted, because some of these are, have been passed down from homeowner to homeowner to homeowner, and it's just unfortunately that...
Nobody ever asks.
Most recent has to take care of it, so. We will continue to do our good customer service where we can, but if we can make this process more efficient, we'd love to do that.
Commissioner Dare? Mute? Yep.
Um, okay, unmuted. I was thinking, you know, when you said it was from 1993, that was the document that we just updated for Smith Rock Parking for the neighborhood. It was a hard copy from 93, so 1993 keeps popping up, and I do think it's important, Chris, that we do it so that people that have an issue can actually go ahead with what they need to do, and of course, we don't want it if they don't have a floor. I mean, I'm sure there's some pretty serious issues out there, perhaps, we didn't have that many homes were built prior to 1945, but wasn't it about 113 when we were talking about the bill a year ago? So I just, you know, please make it as, what is, as Deschutes County friendly as we possibly can without overwhelming our staff's time. And I, I know you guys have thought about this a lot, so thank you for looking back to 93. We keep, that year keeps popping up a lot. I mean, doesn't it seem amazing, though, it's so long ago, and we're finally like, okay, let's bring it up to date?
It's about that time, Commissioner.
Yes. Government.
So, I would agree, we want to make this as friendly and supportive as possible, and, and we don't want to, well, I can't remember the phrase you used, hammer on people who, who haven't been following, or, you know, who inherited problems. I'm, I'm wondering if there is any risk in this, in this system, or in the, the kind of system that we've had in the past, of sending people the message, you know, just do your thing and ask forgiveness or approval later? And how, how do we avoid that? Or, you know, how, how do you kind of send the right message? You really need to do things right the first time, but, you know, we're going to help you fix stuff that, you know, carryover issues from earlier.
It's a great question, and it's a legitimate concern, Commissioner Chang. I think, I think by making, you know, again, a process that is equitable, that's in black and white, that can't change, you know, first of all, I feel like people think that they're being treated fairly, no matter what the project is. But I think the other thing it does is it, it, word will get out. I mean, the word is already out that we've had this process since 1993, and I think the fact that we were pretty loose on it just created, increased the problem. So I, I really think, Commissioner, once this process gets out there, and we, we've talked to COBO, we've talked to COR, and I think we should talk to COR again, especially the real estate folks, I think once this process gets out and they realize, hey, wow, like every single time, you're going to have to get an electrical letter and plumbing letter if you've covered those things up, I feel like the costs and the, and the additional just, you know, tasks involved that they have to, the hoops that they have to jump through, will hopefully make people think twice before they do that, because the word gets out. We're a pretty small community, you know, in that regard, and it's just, it's just amazing how quickly this stuff flies around the community. So I really think it will help, help in that matter, that if they know the county is serious and they know that they have to do, jump through these hoops, they may think twice, because it's, it's definitely, definitely more expensive and, and more onerous to, to work, work this process out than it is to come in and get permits initially.
So in, so in some ways, the wrong message is already out, and we're, we're, this will really back in a little bit.
I, I really think so, Commissioner.
Well, it's the culture and the history of the area. I mean, I think I remember when we were doing the consulting of the fees of the department, the, or the consultant came in and he said, I've seen this before, where you used to be able to just hide behind a rock, or a rock or the trees and just do your thing, but all of a sudden, there's just few, too many people here to do that anymore. But it wasn't, it wasn't malicious, it wasn't the wrong thing to be doing, it was just, just leave me alone, I'll take care of myself, and, but now it's changing, it's evolving, there's just a lot more density, a lot more expectations, and more value. You know, when you're building a, you know, a hand-hewn cabin and you're just wanting to make a living, that's a lot different than a high-dollar house and, you know, nice rural property, so. It's just the evolution of the culture.
And Commissioner, I'll just offer that, we had the consultant in community development in about 2015, and I think Chris has been working on this since about 2015. Chris deserves a lot of credit. He's really been thinking about this and coordinating with a lot of people for a number of years, and we're finally at this point to, to make the updates, and great coordination with legal as well.
Appreciate that, yep.
Okay, so this is a resolution, basically re-adopting what we did, the Board did in 1993, but with a new Appendix A updated for the times. Is there a motion?
Um, I move approval of Resolution Number 2021-069.
I'll second.
Okay, any other discussion? Seeing none, Commissioner Dare?
Yes.
Commissioner Chang?
Yes.
And Chair votes yes. There we go, thank you so much.
Thank you very much, Commissioners, I'll get those minor changes and get them over to you.
All right.
I appreciate your time, thank you.
Good discussion.
Thank you.
So item number 12 is kind of our discussion, the Board of Commissioners in partnership with City of Redmond and Bethlehem Inn, and I asked for this to be on here, so this is for us to be discussed. The City of Redmond, there was, you know, the, kind of the funding proposal for the Bethlehem Inn effort there, the facility for the Turnkey Motel was purchased with state dollars, and the development of the Bethlehem Inn is, is ongoing right now. So I am interested in proposing that the county fund the rest of the Bethlehem Inn project in Redmond with ARPA dollars, and this is for discussion, I mean, I'm just coming up with ideas here, to get this, a clear path, to get the project done, to have it available for the community in a timely fashion, making sure that, since we do have funding, that funding is available to get this done. And, you know, there's other projects that I'm interested in, in the future, especially with Redmond, is, there is an Oasis Village proposal out there, needs to be determined, defined better, figure out what the facts are on that, but I'm just saying, I was on a, a trip to a rodeo in Pendleton, Oregon, when I kind of came to this conclusion about, how about we just fund it at the county level? So that, that is a proposal from, from myself at this time. What are your thoughts, Commissioners?
My, my hope is that, my hope is that the City of Redmond will actively partner with the county to set up facilities and services to help some of our homeless residents in Deschutes County stabilize their lives and get back on track. And I am, you know, I'm, I'm definitely at a loss as, as to best, how best to invite, invite and encourage that partnership from, from the City of Redmond. I, I am concerned that if we, that if we, if we say, okay, we'll, we'll just cover the Bethlehem Inn project costs, then that, that might not set us up well for the, the discussion of the next proposal, the Oasis Village, or, or something else. And I could be wrong about that, maybe that does, maybe that sets us up great to have that discussion with the Redmond City Council, but I'm, you know, I just, I'm just putting out kind of big picture, I, I would like to see Redmond actively partner with us, and I, I have a lot of questions on how we, how we get there, and, and, and some concerns about this being the right signal or, or proposal to, to move us in that direction.
Any thoughts, Commissioner Dare?
Yes, Chair Devon. I was told that perhaps if we, you know, I was the one who was really supportive of this project, it is 88 homeless people, 88, that's, that's a, really a significant number. Gwen runs a good program, she's had a long history in Deschutes County of running a program, she knows what she's doing, and I so appreciate that. But I was told that if we actually picked up the other half of it, that the City of Redmond would recognize that almost half a million dollar funding, and they would give us credit for that when we were talking about doing the sewer system. So is that a possibility here?
So, I mean, I'd be hesitant, well, and so from, from Deschutes County's point of view, ARPA dollars for Terrebonne sewer investment, it was already on a list today to say that, you know, we, we may fund something for Terrebonne, and this. So from our point of view, I don't know that it's going to offset any specific dollars. I heard that mentioned also, I would, I would, I'd rather separate the two, knowing that we're committing to a partnership and not looking for, you know, a response in some other area, I guess, is. I mean, yeah, it's an idea, but I don't want to make that a transaction.
Yeah, I'd, I'd rather...
Commissioner Administrator Anderson say something about this? I would appreciate hearing from Tom, if that's possible.
I'm unsure, Commissioner Dare, exactly what you're looking for?
He's not sure what the...
Okay, I was told that if we fund the 450, on top of our original 450, that we could actually, the Terrebonne sewer project is, what is it, 2.1 million perhaps, our share of that for Terrebonne, and if we fund this, that Redmond will give us a credit for the 450, the second 450.
So as I say, that's a future, future project, so, I mean, is it a transaction to be mapped to at this time? I don't know that, that it is.
I mean, and, and I guess the, the question is, what does that mean? I mean, if we, if we're asking Redmond to be our partner in addressing homelessness in Redmond, and, you know, in the near vicinity of Redmond, I, I mean, does, does that mean that they support being a partner, but they just don't want to put dollars on the table for the Bethlehem Inn, but they'll basically, you know, trade us dollars for something else? Or does it mean that...
Well, and I would say, I mean, this is what we saw, so remember, the city council, it, there was kind of an implied partnership referring to this $900,000 ask split by the county and the city. We saw that the city council basically started to go kind of, I mean, and I, I'm just, you know, making round statements here, but kind of three, three, and one maybe, and then four and three one way, and four and three the other way, you know, so they struggled, they struggled mightily on this. So at this point in time, as I say, I wouldn't, I wouldn't want to do a transaction-type situation here, especially for a future project, but this is the partnership in the community, we want to do good things for, for everybody. Having Bethlehem Inn landed before winter is, is really my goal here. So remember, I mean, the other part of this is, when I came on as a county commissioner here at Deschutes County, we were in a partnership with the City of Bend, and the City of Bend was going to buy Bethlehem Inn with us, referring to the Bethlehem Inn in Bend. Community Development Block grant was going to re, you know, reimburse the city's partial part, part of it, and it didn't happen. So when I got on board here at the county, we ended up with a $2 million building that we had maintenance requirements over. So I'm just saying, we have history of this. It's hard for cities to get there, and, and we, I've seen it in the past. We ended up writing that off in a couple fiscal years, so then there was a clear title for the Bethlehem Inn previously, and it's just the way it's gone. Luckily, we had the resources and, you know, the, the capacity of the county, but, you know, we've, we've done this before, and it's good to have it, you know, clear and free and ready to provide services when people need them.
Yeah, I mean, I, you know, I want to state, you know, I absolutely want to see the Bethlehem Inn project move and, and be ready as soon as possible, and... And, um, and, you know, I also would support the, the county covering more of the costs, but I, I really, I, I really do want to see us build a, a, a partnership structure and relationship around these issues because, you know, as we're, as we're all aware, this is a massive problem and, uh, if we send the message that the county will just, you know, try and absorb the whole thing for the, the region, um, we're not going to be able to do it. It's, we're not going to be able to deliver on that, so, um, that's, that's my concern.
Discussion there, yeah. So do we, does, do all the public municipalities partner in providing a little bit of services to manage the issue, or do we get serious about taking a cultural step as a community to say, okay, I understand there's hard times out there, but, uh, you know, please be engaged in our, our economy. You know, profit and effort is the way that somebody gets paid and you pay your taxes to get services. And we need to, you know, have zero functional homelessness as a goal. But, yeah, I mean, I, I, I would, there's a, there's a huge project out there to be done in the near future. The, the central Oregon culture of how we're going to deal with this. But, yeah, as I say, so then I don't, I don't get to the concept of, how about we both pull our checkbooks out and we both try to do this? I think Deschutes County proper has the resources that we can empower this play, and we didn't start this play. This play was started by the state legislature. Once again, we're, we're kind of backfilling some effort that got started. But it's the right thing to do to get her done right now.
Well, I would, I would either make a motion today or have it brought back on Wednesday. Truly, 88 people, getting them off the street is critical. I was just reading where seven times more people die in cold weather than in hot weather. And as we all are aware, we had, um, we have no idea what our weather is going to be like this winter, but we definitely, getting 88 people off the street is so, so important. We're almost to the first of October. And, um, so therefore, I don't know, Commissioner Devon, either, either I will make a motion to fund the 450,000 today to finish up with, um, what their original ask was of 900,000. Hopefully, that's, that's going to get the job done. Either I would make that today or I'll wait until Wednesday. I don't know. Does, is Greg part of the conversation? Does he have anything he wanted to add? Because he said he did not, he hadn't put this on our agenda today.
Yeah, I mean, just, I, I also, I just want to say again, um, this is, this is the first move in what will be a series of moves that kind of, that, that tee off of this. So, um, we absolutely need those 88 beds, but we also need, we also need the beds that the Shepherd's House project is going to provide. We need the beds that Oasis Village project is going to provide. And if we don't set this up in a way that, that, that we invite partnership, uh, people are going to look to us, to the county, to, to, to solve all of those. And then the other cities will all do the same thing. They'll say, you did, you, you, you covered the whole Bethlehem Inn project in Redmond? Why can't you do this one? And, and that is, uh, we, there's, you know, that could put us in a place where you have to say a lot of no's. Uh, and then there'll be all sorts of, you know, questions about the equitability of the decisions that we've made so far. So I, this, this, I, I, I know we are talking about, we're, we're talking about two things. We're talking about getting one project done, which is extremely important, but we're also talking about the, the precedent, and the expectations that we're going to establish around these issues. And, and I am very concerned that, that this is, this may not send the right message.
Uh, yeah, so I'm not looking for controversy at the Board of Commissioners for this one, and there's big, big discussion in there. You know, um, this is emergency housing, high barrier shelter for homeless people going into the winter. Uh, we have a documented, uh, you know, need for that, obviously. My goal is to have zero functional homelessness, invite people that are can, that can and are willing to be part of our economy. State of Oregon is built on a payroll tax. State legislature's money only comes from a payroll tax. We can't provide social services for more and more people that are not in our economy. We want to help people with addictions. Housing costs are a disaster. That could, you know, there's, so there's many, many layers to this thing. This is just one of those very, as I say, I'm, I'm just, I don't, I'm not looking for conflict here today. This is one of those variables that it's just like, man, let's just knock this one out. It is, it's amazing. We're talking about these kind of dollars, $450,000. Yea or nay, you know, it's just amazing. We do this as a Board of Commissioners, but with the resources available, uh, yeah, I'm still supportive of, of doing this to get rid of one of the, one of the discussions and, you know, be able to go into a joint meeting with the City of Redmond and, and, you know, as I say, not even looking for a, another deal on the side. Let's just say this is it. Let's proceed with this. High barrier shelter for a known service provider in our community. And government shouldn't be doing all of this. I mean, this is a truly public, private, nonprofit partnership. If private companies can make a profit, they can donate to their favorite nonprofit and help people in need, and revenue is going to flow in all directions. So there's, you know, there's a vision of how we can be. The future's got to be bright. I mean, let's just work hard for a bright future. So I'm sorry. As I say, I, she, she's on the verge of making a motion. Would, any thoughts on that now or? I, I'll bring it back Wednesday if we don't do it today too, so.
I'd admit, I'm likely to bring it back Wednesday.
That's fine. Let's do that. I mean, as I say, I'm not looking for conflict here, but I am looking to make something happen too, so. Okay, thank you very much for the discussion.
I guess the one other thing I'd say is.
I'm sorry.
I would love to, I would love to see this, if we're going to move forward with this right now, I would love to see us also simultaneously make a commitment on the Oasis Village project.
Well, see, and it's good that we're talking about that because Oasis Village is a project in Redmond, right? And it's going to be possibly like a, a version of our Veterans Village, so a common building and some cabins, plus possibly camping, right? So that, I mean, that's the vision I know of. I'm full, I'm all in for it. And I don't know that the county is going to pay all that for it. So then there's a, there's a view of, you know, if somebody provides land, can somebody else, private industry, help build this out? Can somebody else, the people that need the services, help pay for some of it? Setting the culture of, you know, if it isn't a full market value of $50 a night for power and water, at least it's $5 or $10 a night. So there's a revenue stream because we can't just keep funding these things. So my point is I, there's a big discussion to talk about for Oasis Village. What is it going to be? Where is it going to be? How much is it going to cost? And I'm in, but I don't think government should just keep paying for the whole thing for a long time. I don't know if that helps you. I'm just.
I, I, I mean.
I'm not opposed to it, but it's, it can't be a big ticket. I didn't put it to Deschutes County for the rest of time.
That's why I'm, that's why I'm asking how we develop the partnerships to, to make some of this stuff happen instead of trying to just ride in and, and, you know, pick this one off, uh, with the Bethlehem Inn ourselves.
So one of the other concepts is, so I'm going to jump tracks a little bit, just, let's try to stay coordinated. Central Oregon Intergovernmental Council may be a great place to have either committee work or board work on this topic. As in, if Deschutes County proper, would, would we lead, you know, us, the three person Board of Commissioners? Or would a committee of a couple city councilors and a commissioner be the right place for this to happen? You know, Central Oregon Intergovernmental Council, our council of governments, maybe this is a, a topic, a task of the COIC or a committee of it or, or whatever. So I'm just pointing out that, yeah, Deschutes County proper, maybe this isn't our domain. I mean, ever since I've been in office as a commissioner, people live in the cities and, and Oregon land use, the rural stays rural. And that, that was it, you know? If there's a housing problem, it's a city problem, not black and white, but generally the way you'd go. So now all of a sudden, we've got a housing problem with a homelessness problem and resources are going to be, yeah, competed for, whatever, you know, whatever.
No, I, I definitely think that the cities have a role to play in, in addressing homelessness. And that's, again, part of the reason why I keep, I keep trying to, you know, putting the hope out there that we, that we develop some, you know, some meaningful partnerships to, to move forward on this work. And so the idea that, the idea of setting up a, you know, some kind of a structure, you know, multi jurisdictional structure, either with the help of COIC or, or someone else. I, I, I think that's a great idea. That, you know, I'd, I'd support that.
So there's a lot of work to be done in that area.
There's a lot of work to be done.
Uh, but on, on, on one hand, we could say that it's, it's, you know, we're, we're proud of, oh, I'm not going to go there. I was going to refer to land use. You know, I just worry that the UGB of Bend should have some, there should have been some easier path instead of a 10 years and millions of dollars when they wanted a UGB expansion. And now we're paying for it. I just, you know, I just see that.
And we're seeing it right now. Stevens Road, the, uh, the.
But it should have been five or six years ago implementing it, not, not having a community conversation.
I mean, the, the, the.
As I say, we don't need to go down.
The initial proposal way back in 2007 or whenever, I mean, it could have, it could have been more compliant with the state's guidance and.
Compliant.
State land use law. It is, it is the law of the land here.
Okay, well, uh, so it's good. We're good. We're talking this stuff out. Commissioner Dare, so as I say, any thoughts about COIC working down the path of homeless issues in central Oregon? And, and I want to, I mean, what's the culture of central Oregon on this issue is kind of what I want to, you know, get out from a committee. You know, we got that letter from a couple city councilors in Bend saying, we have a great idea. Let's have a joint committee on homelessness and you guys lead. And I'm like, oh, it's just interesting how it comes to us. But yeah, any thoughts, Commissioner Dare? Am I mute?
Okay. It's truly incredibly complicated. And from some of the feedback I heard that from what, the Rogue Valley, the Medford people, that the idea for possibly that 10 acre property was actually, they thought was advantageous because it combines your services. It's an incredibly better utilization of space and I, um, you know, so I, I really feel like those kind of projects, and yet the dollar amount to run those projects is, I haven't seen it yet, but I have a feeling that they're really, really huge. The reason why I was, um, really happy to support the Bethlehem Inn project is because that's actually a little over 10,000 a person and in order to get housing for 88 people. And to me, that's, that's a good utilization and, and they clearly know what they're doing. So I'm really, um, you know, I'm much happier in supporting that. I know that Shepherd's House does a great job in their programs in Bend and they are looking into support, um, you know, expanding in Redmond. You know, as long as Redmond wants that expansion, that's, that's always the, the question that needs to be answered. So, um, you know, looking at what we're seeing, um, what's happening all over our community, it's, um, it's, it's definitely challenging and it's, uh, you know, it can break your heart. And definitely, that's why I do believe the 88, um, bed, uh, bed project in Redmond is, is really something that we can get behind now because that has, that has a shorter term date on when it can be effective. In fact, I believe originally it was supposed to be able to be effective sooner than later. And I hope it's not like, you know, our Veterans Village that took us, what is it? It's taken over a year. And, you know, that's 15 tiny homes and that's, it's wonderful, transitional. So anyway, it's a big, it's a big ask.
Well, so thank you very much. I'm just kind of getting back to the beginning here. So the Redmond Bethlehem Inn, the agenda items. So they're meeting tomorrow. So that's why I, when I heard that, I was like, oh, let's put this on for a discussion at the end of our meeting. So I'm just, I just reminded how I even got to this point to do it today, just so we could have our discussion on this topic.
And I, I don't, uh, just from the way that the agenda is written, it doesn't look like the council is going, is, is going in the direction of making investments in these projects right now, but I, I do believe that they're going to hear from a lot of constituents tomorrow. And I, you know, just frankly, I, I hope that they change their mind. I hope that they, they decide that they want to be an investing partner in, in some projects. And, and, uh, if we can at least wait until Wednesday to see whether that, you know, there's any motion in that, in that direction, I think it'd be great.
Okay, well, yeah, let's just leave it there then. Good discussion. So at this time, other items. Do we have executive session today?
We have two.
Yeah, so sorry. Now it's quarter to five. I just kind of got back on track about this.
And we have got Whitney's letter as well.
Yeah, yeah. So let's start to power through some things. Commissioner Dare, were you at the Eastern Oregon Counties Association Board meeting on Zoom today, EOC, earlier today?
No, I was not.
See, and I, so I saw that in passing and I figured she'd be there. So now we missed a meeting there, but that's fine. We can figure out what the status was. I was just wondering if you were there, so that's good. You want to go to this letter? Do you have a copy of the letter from Whitney? This is for FLAP program, um, for the, Central Oregon Intergovernmental Council.
Yes, I have my copy. I've, I've read it. I've highlighted it. And, um, I definitely would support it. Thank you, Whitney.
So there's proposed edits or anything or?
I have one proposed edit. If we're, if we're to that point.
Yeah, no, I'm supportive also. So I haven't, I haven't even read it because I've been so busy, but.
Um, so in the, the third paragraph, the, the big paragraph, there's a, a sentence that reads, "Without the public service that CET provides to reach the Deschutes National Forest, including Mount Bachelor, many would not afford the expensive private services that would replace transit." And maybe we could just say something like, "Without the public service that CET provides, it would be cost prohibitive for many to reach the Deschutes National Forest and Mount Bachelor."
Yeah, definitely.
A little bit of wordsmithing, yeah. Okay, well, so let's, uh, if there's support, let's move approval and then with edits. Because it could even change slightly from there.
Yeah, I, I thought the rest of the letter, I, I think it's a great letter and, and I just wanted to tweak that one sentence. So I, I would move, uh, I would move board approval of a letter of support for, uh, COIC's Federal Lands Access Program, grant application.
I'll second it.
Okay, any other discussion?
With the, with the edits.
Yeah, as edited.
Uh, suggested.
Is, yeah. Agreed. Anything else? Seeing none, Commissioner Chang?
Yes.
Commissioner Dare?
Yes.
And Chair votes yes. Okay. Anything else, other items? Seeing none, we'll go to an.